Welcome to the January 11, 2023, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for the road call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Dr. Kadri Webb, pastor at St. John's Church, for our invocation. Pastor Webb, if you'll please make it to the podium. Everyone, please rise for the invocation.
Good evening, everyone, honorable mayor and council citizens. Shall we pray? Father in Jesus' name, we thank you and we bless your name, and we appreciate you for the opportunity to come into the hallowed walls of government that we all, as citizens, are able to call our own. We pray now that you would guide our time together. We pray that love would abide, that peace, that justice, and honor, one for another, as humankind would abide in this space, even with the diversity of perspectives and the diversity of experience. We pray that love would abound. We pray now that you would speak to the consciences of those who represent so many citizens, and that as we make decisions, we make them with our constituencies in mind. That it's not about us. We pray that in our city, as you said in your word, that you let justice roll down like water and righteousness as a mighty stream. That we might empower all people, not some, but all. There's enough for all of us, and we all can live together in harmony, in mutual love, mutual respect, and diversity. This is my prayer tonight, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to get. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May it be seated. Tonight is a very special night. We have two proclamations, and we are going to start by asking members of the Oceanside Elks to come on down. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Greg Smith, OHHS, we are the best. No. I snuck that in. So, this is really, really very special to me because Elks, as far as, and I was born and raised here, so they've always been there, and we've always known them to be truly a very charitable organization, always giving. And so, this past fall, I was able to join the Elks in a couple of dinners and presentations, and I was so overwhelmed by the amount of love and support and camaraderie in the room that I said, you know, I know the Elks have been around for a long time, and I'll be reading this to let you know. I don't know if anyone can guess how, when the Elks Lodge, Oceanside Elks Lodge Number 1561 was actually founded in Oceanside. Can anybody guess? 1929. 1929. So, this is pretty fantastic. So, after I read this, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to the leadership here, who continue to do the great works. Whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, Oceanside Number 1561, was formed on March 31, 1929, at the Palomar Theater Building. Anybody remember the Palomar Theater in downtown Oceanside with 129 charter members? To inculcate the principles of charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity, to recognize a belief in God, to promote the welfare and enhance the happiness of its members, to quicken the spirit of American patriotism, to cultivate good fellowship, to perpetuate itself as a fraternal organization, and to provide for its government. And whereas, the first business meeting of the Oceanside Elks took place on June 28, 1929, holding meetings at three different locations until acquiring their current facility at 444 Country Club Lane in 1966. And whereas, Oceanside Elks have been one of the leaders in monies donated locally, statewide, and nationally to worthy causes since its inception, such as VA hospitals, the American Heart Association, Stand Down, K9 Companions, active and veteran military organizations and events on and off Camp Pendleton, including hosting monthly meetings of veterans organizations at their facility at no cost, youth groups, and a host of other local charities. And whereas, Oceanside Elks have especially been very active in sponsoring, hosting, and contributing to local youth programs and scholarships, regularly hosting the Oceanside High and El Camino High School football, volleyball, track, cross-country, girls soccer, water polo, and cheer teams, coaches, including coaches and families. Oceanside Pop Warner and Oceanside Breakers Soccer. This past year alone, the Oceanside Elks has provided over $6,000 in monetary and over $45,000 in non-monetary contributions, not including hundreds of volunteer hours and scholarships just for youth programs alone. And whereas, Oceanside Elks continue to be active and strong with over 400 men and women members. And whereas, on October 27, 2022, the Oceanside Elks hosted the first-ever Joint Oceanside High School and El Camino High School Football Teams Dinner, historically bringing both highly competitive Oceanside teams together, and that included coaches and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim today, January 11, 2023, as Oceanside Elks Lodge Number 1561 Day in the City of Oceanside. With tremendous gratitude for their 94 years of continuous and many contributions, leadership, and sponsorships, Oceanside Elks truly live up to their motto, "Elks care, Elks share, because Elks make lives better." Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In case some of you wonder, I'm Tom Trevor. I happen to be, this year is Exalted Ruler until April, and then we'll turn over the command to the next set of officers. I have with me one of my trustees, Greg Smith, and one of my officers, Joe. We have fun with each other. We really appreciate this, and our hearts are all in taking care of the youth kids. Growing up, I had a bunch of that myself, so I know how it feels. And we really thank you for it.
So, you know, he's not going to say, talk a lot about everything that they do, but maybe, Greg, you can say a little bit more?
Well, we'll go into it a little bit, but biggest thing we have, Esther and Tom will be giving away the first annual, from an Oceanside student, this year, $10,000 scholarship. It'll be done in March, so we'll be having that first ever. This will be from a member by the name of Pauline Novak and Eddie Novak, in their memory, and he's left a lot. This scholarship will never go away. It'll keep rolling and rolling longer than my lifetime, any young kid here. That's how much he left, and this is what he did it. So, we'll be honoring that scholarship in March. Tom will give the first one away. So, I'm grateful for that one, because it's a local one. It stays here in our city. And parents and everything that's here and that have kids in the city, we've enjoyed working with your kids. They've been unbelievable. Coaching staff at Oceanside High, the kids, all the way down to the Boys and Girls Club, we take them shopping for shoes, shirts, everything. They come back in, make pizzas, sundaes. We have a blast with them. So, you know, I grew up here, just like Esther did. I remember sitting in these rooms 37 years ago, and my dad was sitting in one of these seats here as city councilman and deputy mayor for 20 years. So, it's changed quite a bit. You guys are doing a great job. I want to thank every one of you guys and everything. And the city has grown unbelievable. So, part of the Elks, I just want to thank you and everything, and we'll keep moving forward to help let our young ones and everything grow and remember the city here.
Thank you. Thank you. Big applause for these guys. They really, really, I mean, the volunteer hours alone is just so amazing, hundreds every year. So, thank you for your 94 years. You don't look a day over. No, for everything that they've done. I mean, it's been continuous, even during COVID. They were, you know, still working together. And since 1929, it's just amazing. So, we're going to have, go ahead and have a picture together? Did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, the next one, I saw Bee walk in. All right, Bee, come on down. So, this is our annual proclamation in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and this is for the Day of Service. There are two days, okay? Day of Service, which is this coming Saturday, and then the Day of Remembrance and Community Prayer Breakfast, that is next Monday, and that's January 14 and January 16. Whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life in advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a most perfect union. And whereas, the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, offering an opportunity for all Americans to give back to their communities and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout this year, the year. And whereas, each year since 1989, the North San Diego County NAACP has been the champion of Dr. King's legacy, bringing our North San Diego County communities together at an annual community prayer breakfast, the oldest community event in Oceanside, in celebration and service to others, including announcing the annual City of Oceanside's Community Service Award recipient. And whereas, for 34 years, the North San Diego County NAACP's Annual Community Breakfast Event has brought together hundreds of North County's leaders, government and military dignitaries, corporate and business leaders, and community members at large to pay homage to the life and legacy of Dr. King. And whereas, today, more than at any other time in our country's history, the work of Dr. King that culminated in the Voting Rights Act of 1965 is under attack. These times require us to act as Dr. King acted and fight as Dr. King fought, to defend, retain, and expand our civil rights, and to require that our federal representatives enact laws ensuring and protecting the voting rights of all citizens of the United States. And whereas, this year is especially historic as we celebrate New York Congressman Hakeem Jeffries as the first African-American lawmaker to lead a party in Congress, chosen unanimously at each of 15 rounds of voting, addressing the 118th Congress for the first time on January 7, 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim January 14, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, and January 16, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Day of Remembrance in the City of Oceanside, and call upon the people of our city to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. King through participation in community service projects on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day Weekend, beginning on Saturday, January 14, and throughout the year, as well as joining us in love and advocacy for the North San Diego County NAACP's Community Prayer Breakfast on Monday, January 16. So, Bee, I'm going to go ahead and hand you the mic. And I know this is, this is something that we're doing this year and several years with Minacosta College. So, in cutting it down for the program, you know, we cut it down a lot. So, but we're going to make sure that on Monday that we have everything included, which Minacosta is a very, very valuable partner. So, thank you so much. And also, Bee has had a great idea, great ideas about service work on Saturday, so she's going to let you know about that.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor Esther, and the council here. It's such an honor for me to receive this on behalf of a North San Diego County NAACP, its executive leadership, and the whole community that makes up our North San Diego County NAACP, and all of the collaborations like Minacosta Community College. This year, we have nine different organizations represented. We have Brother Benno's, Community Roots Farm, Humanity Showers, Sanctuary of Oceanside, just to name a few, Casa de Amparo, and Operation Hope North County. And so, what you do is, you sign up at North San Diego County NAACP and go to the Day of Service. You'll come to Minacosta College. This is my 16-plus year working at Minacosta, so it's such an honor. I was raised here in Oceanside to bring together communities so that you all can serve and learn about the different resources and services that are provided at our amazing Oceanside. So, gracias, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. And also, we are going to be working with the Oceanside Public Library Saturday.
Yes. Okay, so this year, on Saturday, the Oceanside Public Library, how could I forget that? The Civic, right here in the community center, we are building a rock garden. And so, the community, the families, this is a great project if you need a service project where you can't move a lot or you can't lift up things and squat and bend. And so, you can come, bring your kids, and you'll get to look at some of the prompts and quotes of Dr. King and his work, and then create a rock that'll go to the garden. There'll also be Cynthia's Expression doing another collective community art, and then the Ace Lab, I think it's called, that will have some art activity, Studio S. Yes, thank you, that will have art projects there. So, be part of this new community project in honor of Dr. King.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you do, Bee. She also works very hard with Hope. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you can all join in on the activities. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a closed session report from our city attorney, Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. The council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss several items. Item one is a conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association. Item two, related to pending litigation involving the matter of Denniston v. City of Oceanside and Sanchez-Garcia versus City of Oceanside. And finally, several workers' compensation cases involving a former employee, William Wallace. The case numbers are all identified on page two of the agenda. With regard to the labor negotiation item, there was no reportable action under the Brown Act. On item two, item 2A1 was an information-only presentation. Items two and three, direction was provided, but there's no action under the Brown Act that is required to be reported at this time.
Thank you. Onto our consent calendar items, which are items four through nine. Any requests from the public to pull any items? A request to speak?
No request from the item to pull any of the items. Or just talking them.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Did you get who that was, Zev? Split the difference there. Okay, there's a motion and second to approve the consent calendar, items number four through nine. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Onto general items. We have one item, that's item number nine, adoption of the Resolution of Intention declaring its intention to establish City of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, which is the North River Farms Public Facilities, the Facility CFD, adoption of the Resolution of Intention to incur bonded indebtedness within the Facility CFD, and adoption of the Resolution of Intention declaring its intention to establish City of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2023-1. So, there are two different, one that is a public facilities, the other that is a public, excuse me, fire services, North River Farms Fire Services, Services CFD. So, we have a report by Ms. Jill Moya, our financial services director. Ms. Moya?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to present item number nine on the agenda related to establishing two community facilities districts, as our mayor just read off to us. One for facilities and one for fire services as part of the North River Farms project. This evening, staff is recommending that council adopt the Resolutions of Intention to establish a community facilities district to potentially finance the required infrastructure improvements and a Resolution of Intention to incur bonded indebtedness for the Facility CFD, as well as adopt a Resolution of Intention to establish a community facilities district to fund ongoing fire services, ongoing fire costs to operate the new fire station. By approving tonight's action, council will only be setting the public hearing to vote on the establishment of the CFD. Council is under no obligation to approve the formation of the districts following the conclusion of the public hearing. CFDs are special tax districts by which property owners in an established geographic area agree to impose a tax on property within the area to fund services, public improvements, or infrastructure. CFDs are created through sponsorship by a local agency, and the district includes all properties that will benefit from improvements or services. In November 2019, council approved the North River Farms Project, a mixed-use housing development located along North River Road. Conditions of approval for the project included certain public improvements and the building and operating of a new fire station to service the area. To meet these conditions, the developer is requesting the formation of two community facilities districts, a Facilities CFD to fund public improvements, and a Services CFD to fund operations of the new fire station. These taxes would only apply to future homeowners within the North River Farms developed. The Facility CFD is expected to finance the costs of certain public improvements through the levy of special tax and the issuance of bond. The maximum amount of bonded indebtedness proposed for the Facility CFD is $45 million. The city used the services of DTA, the city's tax rate consultant, to perform a tax rate analysis in order to estimate the required assessment for each new residential unit. The assessment rates were calculated proportionally based on square footage of each unit. Public improvements that could be financed by the Facility CFD include public facilities such as sewer, water, storm drainage, park, fire, and roadway and traffic facilities. Rates for the Facility CFD differ depending on the zone and square footage of each unit. They range between $3,135 and $5,120 annually. This rate would increase by 2% annually and include annual administrative costs. This assessment district would operate over the term of the debt service payments, usually 20 years, and then terminate. For the conditions of approval of the project, the city agreed that funding the operations of the new fire station would be from a community facilities district and a portion of the additional property tax generated by residential development. The additional property tax is estimated to be $1.1 million, and the annual cost to operate the new fire station is estimated to be $1.3 million. Staff worked with DTA and the developer to determine the required tax rate. Staff is recommending that 59% of the increased property tax be applied to the fire station operations. The Services CFD would cover the remaining operating expense, which would be $1,599 per unit. The rate would increase by CPI for the San Diego region with a maximum increase of 6% and a minimum increase of 2%. This district would only include, would also include a future annexation area. To further clarify, should the Fire Services CFD be approved and special taxes levied? Those taxes will apply to future homeowners in the North River Farms project only. They will not apply to existing properties within the annexation area. Annexation into a CFD requires city council's approval and a vote of the property owner. Existing developed properties in South Morro Hills will not be asked to annex into the Fire Services CFD. Staff anticipates that the future annexation area for the Fire Services CFD will only apply to residential projects that seek approvals at densities inconsistent with the existing planning and zoning designations. It is possible that there will be no such projects in the future. However, the annexation area is being designated now in order to provide council with this option. The new fire station is required to be built and partially staffed after the 10th occupancy and fully staffed after the 33rd occupancy. This would provide adequate property, this would not provide adequate property tax and CFD revenue to fund the operations of the station. To address this funding gap, the developer has agreed to reimburse the city in the amount of $1.05 million for costs of operating the fire station until the special taxes and property taxes fully support the operations of the new fire station. The next steps to the formation of the two CFDs would be the following. Adopt the Resolutions of Intention to establish each CFD. Record boundary map of each CFD. On February 15, hold a public hearing. Adopt resolutions forming each CFD. And call in election to approve the rate and method of apportionment for each CFD and the bonded indebtedness limit for the Facility CFD. On the same date, hold an election within each CFD and adopt resolutions certifying the election results and introduce ordinances authorizing the levies of the special tax for each CFD. In conclusion, staff is recommending that council adopt the Resolutions of Intention to set the public hearing to vote on the establishment of the CFD. If the Resolutions of Intention are adopted by council, council is under no obligation to approve the formation of the districts at the time of the public hearing. I am here to answer any questions, along with Andrea Ross from DTA and Nick Giger, representing the city's bond council, along with other city staff.
Yeah, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have three speakers registered for this item. Our first speaker is Dennis Martnik, to be followed by Aaron Moran, to be followed by Jimmy Knott.
Dennis Martnik, 43-year resident of the South Morro Hills area.
Dennis Martinick, 43-year resident of the South Morro Hills area of Oceanside. I'd like to thank Ms. Moya for an excellent presentation that answers a lot of the questions that folks in our area have had. Also, the addition of paragraph three on page two of the staff report is also very helpful. It explains, again, some of the questions that we had. This is a sprawl development project as a result, and typically, it's going to require a lot more infrastructure costs than usual. We were concerned primarily about who's paying for the cost, and we did not know that we should subsidize the developer. The... One question that may come up, what that has come up, that maybe Ms. Moya could address, is related to this map. And also, the listing of our parcel numbers. I'm surprised that the folks that asked me these questions read through 90 pages of a staff report to get through this. But it did raise questions. I think it's understandable. But if she could explain it, I think she'd do a lot better job than I would. Again, this is a project that was opposed by many people. The staff, planning staff opposed it, the planning commission opposed it, and voters opposed it. And we just want to be careful that we don't have to pay for the costs that are going to be generated within that project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinick.
Erin Moran, to be followed by Jimmy Knott.
Hi, my name is Erin Moran. I live at 1241 Shambor Court, Oceanside, California. Also, I am a large landowner in South Morro Hills on Sleeping Indian. There's going to be a big question. Why are we discussing about a firehouse right now when we've got... We don't even have an answer if we're going to be adding a sewer plant? Or if the extent... If this service that is currently now being used, are we going to expand? Can that be expand? As an optional? Because you are looking at a place where septic is. And that is a question that we should be talking about right now. We're currently on septic. That area that North River Farms is on is septic, I do believe. And we haven't discussed about that. And that is the million-dollar question in my head. I really would like that question answered. And how are we going to be affording the cost of water? Water is a serious question, because every time, every year, we're talking about water increase. We're talking about just maintaining the sewer and the facilities that are around here. But I just want to make sure that, why are we talking about this first when we're... When we have a... When we're in a drought, we're... And Jimmy Knott's probably going to be bringing up the water situation as well. So, I want that answer, that question answered. And I understand that we're talking about fire right now, but... But the thing is, what about sewer, and who's going to be paying for it? Thanks.
Mayor, council, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. And yes, I'm going to bearing up the water situation. Historically, this area was inundated way back in 1916. If you read your history and know the history of Oceanside, back then, the water and the flooding spread from canyon side to canyon side and encompassed this area. And if you look at and listen to carefully what staff presented, extra services were listed, but not shown on the slide, which could encompass a huge cost for any citizen that is in that area. Citizens not listed, like residents, renters, people that are in the businesses. They were not included. That cost could be cascaded upon. Now, the flood and drainage people have not had their input into this, as I have heard. And another thing that was not listed was the multiplier effect. Like this year, we had an increase of our inflationary index. It went beyond 6%, 7%, 8%, 9%. It's not fully calculated, as it is now. And so, this max of 6% would take... Be undercut, and there would be a negative balance. Where will that balance come from? And the people that will be allowed to vote are only property owners. The rest of the people will be disenfranchised. You will be taking and voting to disenfranchise potentially thousands of people, telling those people they don't matter. You will take and tell them, "Oh, you don't care about them", even though they will bear the cost. We need to take and look at the residents and the citizens of our entire city, not just a few landowners. We need to take and look at this very carefully, not just looking at what staff wants to include.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. And did staff want to answer some of the questions? And I know that, at the very beginning, Ms. Moya indicated that this is simply an intent to hold a hearing to consider these issues and consider establishing. By no means does this obligate the council or individual city council members to vote in support of establishing these districts. But there are some questions that people seem to want to have answered tonight, even though we're not really passing on that issue. Ms. Moya, or Mr. Mullin? If you'd like to answer the questions.
Honorable Mayor and council, I think Mr. Martinick asked about the future annexation area.
They were going to the map. He wanted to have the map explained.
The map and why those parcel numbers are listed. We are required at this time to identify that future annexation area to give the council the option in the future to determine if they would like anyone else to ever annex into it. We have, as the staff report indicated, refined that only towards projects that would require a general plan amendment or a rezone in that specific location, and there may be none. Our intent is to bring a policy document to you at the public hearing to give you the option of actually formally adopting that as policy of the city. You recently adopted a council policy with respect to a public Fire Services CFD. And so, our thought is that we're just simply going to take the language that we've identified and put that into the policy, so it's enshrined in an official city policy. But the reason those parcel numbers are listed is because that comprises the South Morro Hills area, and that is the future annexation area potentially, although we're not proposing that anyone be taxed within it.
Thank you. And Ms. Moran did have the question about sewer lines, which is a little bit off the topic here. But her concern was, who was going to pay for sewer lines?
So, I'm happy to send her the conditions of approval for the project from years ago that comprehensively address sewer and water conditions. But yeah, that's not really an item before you tonight.
Right. Okay. So, this is not before us this evening, Ms. Moran? Okay? Moran? So, back to the council, council member Weiss.
Thank you. I just want to clarify with staff. So, the... What we're doing today is setting the public hearing for February. We're not approving the rate and apportionment. We're not approving all of the numbers that were in your slides in regards to which zone is going to pay what. We're just setting the public hearing for February.
Council member Weiss, I want to... Yes, but I want to introduce our outside special counsel, our bond counsel, who works with Brian Forbath. This is Nick Yeager, who can address that.
Yeah, hi. So, my name's Nick Yeager. I'm from Stradling. We're the city's bond council. And that's correct. These resolutions are just to set the public hearing, you know, for... The resolutions call for it on February 15th. It's not committing the council to form either of the districts.
Then I'll move approval staff recommendation.
There's a motion? There's a motion and a second. Did you wish to speak to this? Okay. I did want to... Did anybody else want to speak? Nope? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands. This is not... This is not requiring a council vote today for establishing it. This will be heard on February 15th. It is unfortunate the way the resolution is worded. It talks about the council desiring to adopt this resolution and also to approve an estimate of the costs and also to consider financing the facilities and administrative expenses. It sounds like it's something that we're doing tonight, but we are not doing that tonight. Those questions will be before the council at a... On the general?
Public hearing.
It will be a public hearing, so it'll be noticed. It'll be at 6 o'clock. So, time's certain. For example, for me, I have already voted on the creation of one for Fire Services, and I do support that. I do have concerns about, personally, or as a council member, Melrose, establishing a Melrose. So, those are things that we will hear more information, get more information at the hearing. And at that time, we'll hear from everyone who wishes to speak on the very specifics of it. And then the council will vote after it is heard, all the facts as presented in the staff report and has heard from everyone who wishes to speak on this item. All right? So, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. We're going to go to the communications, off-agenda items, number 13, advanced written request to reserve time to speak. We have four of them, which is more than I think we've seen in one agenda... Do we have Diane Hanson here today? Or now?
I don't see her. I don't think she's here tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, she should be here shortly? Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and start with A. Ken Layton. And he has indicated... Mr. Layton has indicated he wishes to address housing staff concerns.
At a recent city council meeting, the mayor said the housing staff was failing us. City staff reaction of the city that I... The staff that I spoke with sort of had a hand wringing and saying it was so inappropriate that she did that. And then, but I got to thinking, what if she's right? So, please know that the city council is ultimately responsible for Oceanside government. For instance, the development that will ruin South O with parking because of its three-to-one bedroom to parking ratio was approved by the city council. The hideous stacked metal box train wreck called The Breeze was also okayed by the city council. And the latest that I just found out about yesterday, plans have been presented to the city council to raise Motel 6, which is a coast highway where Highway 76 runs into it, to be replaced by another 82-room motel and an eight-story, 360-unit condo complex. And I'm sure this is being presented because they... The developer knew the city council is easy prey. The city council must also ultimately be responsible for its staff. The tail does not wag the dog. If a department head is violating the spirit and letter of the law, let's address it right here. Little background, our current housing director came from Chula Vista, which has a history and culture of bending over forwards and backwards for developers and mobile home park owners, which may explain why she wants to lower in lieu fees to help developers here in Oceanside. Repeating, our housing director wants to cheapen fees to build out Oceanside as if we need to provide them with a financial incentive. Ms. Hines, you're not in Chula Vista anymore. The most affordable housing for some 6,000 Oceanside residents happens to be mobile homes. But guess what? Chula Vista does not have the same protections for mobile home residents as Oceanside does, which passed rent control help in 1982 and reaffirmed it in 2012. It used to be that if mobile home residents would get illegally gouged by mobile home park owners, the housing director would personally fix it or have code enforcement make sure the laws were enforced. But now, roads are crumbling and not getting fixed. Little old ladies on fixed incomes are told to fix trees that are not theirs under threat of eviction. Broken water valves needed for fire prevention go unfixed for years. Lighting repairs in seniors-only parks are not getting repaired, violating state law. Guest parking areas for caregivers and handicap parking are getting taken away for profit by mobile home park owners. By the way, this is happening at Lamp lighter Park. This violates ADA laws. Bottom line, mobile home park owners are business owners licensed by the City of Oceanside. What other businesses in Oceanside are allowed to openly break the law is my question. Meanwhile, these people on fixed incomes are afraid to speak out because they fear for their own... Their own livelihood, afraid of retaliation. Those who do find the housing developer frequently ignores them or, paraphrasing here, "It's not my problem." It even gets loosey-goosey in the legal department. The owner of Rancho San Luis Rey for almost two years was an illegal entity suspended from doing business.
Can you please wrap it up?
Okay. I'll finish. I guess I wrote too much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there was a special request from Ms. Hanson.
Ms. Hanson wanted to comment on Mr. Layton's comments, but I don't see her here, so we will take her on off-agenda.
Okay, we'll take... She'll speak at a later time then. Next is Katie Taylor to speak on migrants dropped off at Oceanside Transit Center.
Is it possible for me to wait for Mr. Weiss to come back?
You know, we have a 6 o'clock time certain three items. So, you may have to wait until after 6 o'clock?
That's... Oh, he's back.
Okay.
And we have some handouts. Can Rosie hand them out?
Hand them to the city clerk, please. Could you begin your comments? We're trying to get as many done as possibly before 6 o'clock.
Okay. Katie Taylor, Fire Mountain, City Council, you have a decision to make. Put the one up there. Either you work for the citizens of Oceanside or you work for the Mexican drug and human trafficking cartels. The solution to illegals dropped at Oceanside Transit Centers is not to assist illegal immigrants in any form. This includes any city services or community agencies. By aiding any... By providing any aid, assistance, or transportation to other locations or places, places city council in a direct working relationship with the Mexican cartel, infamous for their abuse of women and children. Council member Eric Joyce thinks borders are imaginary. Eric Joyce said exactly that, borders are imaginary, when he was a member of the Oceanside School Board. He openly advocates for open borders. He should resign immediately, as he lied while taking his oath of office to protect the Constitution. Now there's some action. The city should stand prepared to send a bus to any Oceanside Transit Center and transport the illegals back to the border. This is the only money the city should spend on the problem. This is the only money the city should spend on the problem to do anything else as the city working free for the Mexican cartels, being cartel's U.S. distributor, distributing illegals all over California and the country to finish the cartel's work. July 2014, myriad of citizens stood up and they stopped the illegals being dumped in their neighborhood. That's the flyer right there. Now I want to give you an interesting quote from 1993. Independents, Republicans and Democrats used to be on the same page about illegals. We do not think the comprehensive healthcare benefits should be extended to those who are undocumented workers and illegal aliens. We do not want to do anything to encourage more illegal immigration into this country. We know now that too many people come here for medical care as it is. We certainly don't want them having the same benefits that American citizens are entitled to have, quote by Hillary Clinton in 1993. August 14th, U.S. Today, 2019, southern border is a smuggler's hive. Do Democrats really believe in open borders? By not enforcing immigration law, it sure looks that way. March 25th, 2021, President Biden holds a press conference and these are his lies. Border crisis happens every year, false. President Trump's policies didn't reduce illegal crossings, false. Remain in Mexico was inhumane, false. July 13th, 2021, migrant caravan chaos begins based on Biden's promise he would ease border crossing restrictions when he became president. So far, illegal migrants and terrorists from 147 countries have crossed the border. September 20th, 2021, New York Post, President Biden's decision not to require any COVID vax or negative tests for illegals crossing the border, while at the same time requiring two thirds of U.S. workers to be vaccinated. October 22nd, 2022, NBC News, migrant border crossings in fiscal year 2022 top 2.76 million, breaking previous record. This is more people than the population of Wyoming, North and South Dakota combined. November 21st, 2022, Center for Immigration Studies legalized, they want to legalize border crossings for all. The next stage of Biden's plan. December 25th, 2022, Times of San Diego, migrants dropped off at Oceanside Transit Centers. More illegal border crossings in 2022 than President Trump's entire presidency. December 27th, 2022, Mark J. Perry, economic professor, 233,740 migrants apprehended the U.S. border last month. 73,000 evaded the border patrol. At this rate, 9.7 million illegals will enter the country during Biden's presidency. January 10th, hallelujah. Florida sues the Biden administration for their border crisis. January 11th, today, articles of impeachment against Secretary Mayorkas for his high crimes and misdemeanors. Some in our local government will say border patrol can only hold migrants for so many days and they have to be released, not Oceanside's problem. I'm asking the city council, are you in this time of hyperinflation protecting Oceanside's financial resources and reserves? Is your first priority the safety of Oceanside residents? Or will you allow yourselves to become a business partner of the Mexican cartel? Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next is Richard Newton. Richard Newton, is he here? Okay, and he is speaking on AMI smart meter opt out and billing concerns. And then the last one, we'll have to wait until after our six o'clock public hearings. So maybe around 7:30.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. The intrusiveness of the Water Smart Program, also referred to as advanced metering infrastructure or simply AMI, cannot be overstated. The program consists of water meters that transmit hourly consumption data of private residents to the city or its agents who then retain, manage and analyze the data. Such granularity is a threat to privacy and a great deal of information can be extracted from such data. I thank the council for recognizing the need for and creating an opt out last year. For reference, the older water meters were read once per month on the final day of the billing cycle. By subtracting the previous month's meter read, water consumption could be determined and billed accordingly. Only the meter read on the last day of each billing cycle was needed. In contrast, AMI meters sent 24 meter reads per day or 720 in a 30 day billing cycle. Yet again, only the last meter read is needed for billing. The first 719 are not used for billing, but for surveillance of water consumption activity. This means that literally 99.9% of AMI transmitted data is for the purposes of surveillance and only 0.1% is for billing. Seen in this light, it is correct to assert that AMI meters are surveillance devices masquerading as billing devices. That means the purpose of the devices has changed. Let me say that again. This means that the purpose of the devices has changed. They are no longer billing devices measuring consumption, but surveillance devices that observe private activity. Having said all of that, there were several objections to the opt out form released by the city. Highlighted in yellow at the top, we see that we must agree to abide by California overriding our choice to opt out in times of drought. But California has no legal right to force a surveillance device into our private residences as the California Constitution guarantees a right to privacy. There are other methods to restrict water consumption without resorting to Orwellian surveillance devices. Another objection is the blank check nature of the yet to be determined B printed in red ink there in the middle. No one should be obligated to agree to such terms. On page two, the city asserts authority to determine if an individual is eligible to opt out. Since when does the government decide if a law abiding individual is eligible to retain his or her right to privacy? Simply put, the draconian terms put forward on this form are not acceptable and need to be made null and void immediately. The city's proposal to charge a fee to opt out is also entirely inappropriate. They have created a device with an entirely different purpose than a traditional water meter. Then they cram it down our throats and tell us we have to pay for the privilege of not being spied on. That is not acceptable. Their proposed fee plan would charge excessive pro rata fees for those who opt out. The fewer the number of opt outs, the more expensive opting out becomes. Perhaps by design, such fees could deter people from opting out or cause those who do opt out to stop. This would cause an upward price spiral, eventually making it too expensive for anyone to opt out. This is particularly offensive when one considers that the water department took a series of steps to minimize the number of opt outs, people opting out from the start. Setting all this aside, AMI installations began on my street earlier today. Contrary to the city's publications, no advance notice was made of a pending installation and no notice was posted on doors. The installer did not have an accurate list of those who opted out. At least five neighbors had AMI meters installed who did not want them. According to the installer, installations have continued unabated since at least March 2022, yet the water department did not make any public notifications of an opt out until the end of 2022. In future meetings, I will elaborate on the water department's actions to obstruct or hinder opting out from AMI, the city's method of calculating fees and its unequal application of Proposition 218. All of these actions by the city will cause economic harm to those of us who have opted out if the city insists on charging opt out fees. I see the wisdom of the founding fathers who saw the need for citizen oversight of entrenched government bureaucrats who do what they want safely behind the mantle of government. You who sit on the council are elected citizens and it is your role to oversee those entrenched government bureaucrats and to ensure they do not abuse their authority. In the case of AMI, the concerns of citizens have been pushed aside and ignored. We have been lied to and now we face a punitive set of fees for the audacity of wanting to protect our privacy. We are a government of the people, by the people, for the people. We see before us entrenched bureaucrats ignoring requests to opt out, cramming surveillance devices onto our homes and punishing us for challenging it. Do your jobs, rein in these tyrants, immediately halt the AMI installation program, investigate these matters and respect the rights and requests of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we do have one more minute. I do want to take a point of information. Katie, you brought up the drop by of asylum seekers who were dropped off by the U.S. Customs and Border Protection officers. I wanted to let you know that this was a great concern to me and I got calls immediately. This is Christmas Eve, Eve, Christmas Eve, and then also the day after Christmas. A very bad time to be dropping off actually migrants who are legally here in the country. They would not be dropped off here. Yeah, well, let me just tell you, okay? We were able to confirm that they were, that they were, those that were brought here during that time period were legally here with a hearing, a future hearing to consider, ma'am, please, I'm just going to tell you, to consider whether they are able to establish their, to meet the requirements for seeking asylum. Those seeking asylum basically are facing death squads and threats to their lives. So I want to tell you that every single one except for, excuse me, except for two, all of those that arrived here wanted to continue to their destinations, which except for two were outside of the state of California. So all of those wished to be brought to the airport to be able to catch a flight, to go to the place that they are being sponsored and be able to meet that hearing. So these were legally here. Yes, ma'am, I was, I've been involved with this. So Title 42, Title 42 is something different, but I'm trying to respond to the concerns that obviously people have. Actually, we had nonprofit partners who actually got together to offer assistance in whatever, whatever, what was needed. And basically it was mostly besides some water and food to be taken to the airport. So except for a few people, they did not stay here very long. They moved on and I am proud to say that the nonprofits that took up this, that took up this challenge to help our city to ensure that we did not have people who are actually from Arizona and being dropped off in Oceanside. They should have been, this is called a lateral transfer. Our congressman is addressing this to try to stop that, those lateral transfers. So now we are going to. Now we are going to get to our six o'clock time certain items. Ma'am, you are out of order. We are now reaching, going to our public hearing items, starting with item number 10, which is adoption of a resolution, upholding planning commission resolutions number 2022 dash P26 and number 2022 dash P29, approving development plan D20 dash 00004 and a request for density bonus to allow the construction of a new mixed use project on 18.9 acres of vacant land at the southwest corner of Skylark Drive and Crouch Street and certifying the associated sustainable community environmental assessment and adopting the mitigating, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program. The proposed program consists of 295 rental apartments. That's 265 market rate units and 30 income restricted units and 3,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space. The applicant is JPI Real Estate Acquisition LLC. The appellant is Candace Johnson. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request that council members report, disclose contacts from constituents and also their correspondence.
Staff, the applicant was at the site and we've received a number of emails and letters.
Same, staff, emails, letters and site visit.
The same, basically mostly from the public emails and calls regarding this project.
A lot of public outreach in the form of email and some calls. And I also walked the site with the developer.
Staff, applicant, public site visit.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Do we have any correspondence and or petitions?
The city clerk's office received numerous correspondence regarding this issue and all correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to this meeting.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a report from Mr. Russ Cunningham, planner for the city of Oceanside.
Mayor Sanchez, members of city council, good evening. I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's planning division. Before you is an appeal of a development plan and request for density bonus approved by the planning commission on October 10th of last year. That allows for a mixed use development, development on a roughly 19 acre vacant site at the southwest corner of Crouch Street and South Oceanside Boulevard, directly across the street from the Crouch Street Sprinter Station. The project comprises 295 apartment units and 3,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space. In keeping with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, the project would reserve 30 of the 295 rental units for low income households. I'll provide an overview of the proposed project, share the points of appeal articulated by the appellant, Ms. Candace Johnson, and summarize city staff's response to these points of appeal. Before I do these things, I'll note that zoning ordinance section 4604, initiation of appeals and calls for review establishes that, quote, "The reasons or justifications given by the appellant shall form the basis on which the appeal hearing before the appropriate appellant body shall focus. Issues not addressed by the appellant in the written appeal cannot be considered in the appeal hearing." So while staff is happy to answer any questions you may have about the project, your decision on the appeal must be based solely on the points of appeal outlined in Ms. Johnson's correspondence appended to this staff report as attachment two. With respect to this correspondence, staff finds that no empirical basis or appeal of the planning commission's decision has been established and therefore recommends that the city council uphold the planning commission approval of the project and the associated environmental document. Let's turn to the project description. Again, the site shown here is roughly 19 acres in size in terms of the area that would be developed. It is vacant, rubbed, graded. The site also does include sloped portions that would not be impacted, would not be disturbed. The project site bears a general plan and zoning designation of community commercial. It falls within the smart and sustainable corridors of specific plan area. Surrounding uses include single family residential to the south, office space to the west, Loma Alta Creek and the Sprinter rail line to the north. There is vacant land to the east. The, a portion of the project does lie within the floodway and flood plain of Loma Alta Creek. So there will be mitigation of those conditions and that can be spoken to should there be questions about that. There is a potable water line that runs through the site presently. That line will be abandoned. Questions about that abandonment and water service can be responded to as well. We have water utility staff available to provide comment on that. The slopes that you see here do include sensitive habitat and that habitat, again, would remain undisturbed. So here's a view of the site looking from the intersection of Crouch and South Oceanside Boulevard. You see that graded and grubbed portion and the slope behind. You see what is a noncompliance sidewalk on the north side of Crouch Street heading up the slope there. I'll note that the project would implement sidewalk up Crouch Street on that side of the street and along the project frontage on South Oceanside Boulevard. Here's the site plan. This is very street oriented development with surface and tuck under parking concentrated in central and rear portions of the site. Primary two way entrance is located here and you'll see that in a moment on rendering. And there's a secondary exit only driveway here to the west. No earthwork or development on slopes or landslide areas, as I mentioned. And buildings, habitable spaces are set back from the toe of that slope, given some slope instability. The project would feature landscaping along the perimeter of the site where it abuts the public right of way and within parking and vehicle circulation areas. Amenities include indoor fitness facilities, a bike repair room, a dog spa, club and conference rooms, an outdoor pool and spa, an outdoor fire pit, dog park and a nature walk located in this area here. So here's a rendering of the north elevation as viewed from Crouch Street, the Sprinter Station and Oceanside Boulevard west of Crouch Street. You can see that primary entrance flanked by ground level retail space on either side. Four story residential development with a maximum height of 49 feet. Four-story residential development with a maximum height of 49 feet. Contemporary design with inset and projecting deck areas, extensive fenestration, scorelines, a variety of finished materials, and paint accents. We find this to be an attractive and appropriate development type for this location and for mixed use. The project would implement several traffic and pedestrian improvements. These include closing the gap in South Oceanside Boulevard. That bold arrow with, yeah, arrows going in either direction there, that is the segment of South Oceanside Boulevard that would be completed to connect Crouch Street to State Tree and to Commerce to the west of this image here. The project provides two additional, with this connection, the project provides two additional points of access to Oceanside Boulevard. It would install a new left-turn pocket on northbound Crouch Street accessing westbound South Oceanside Boulevard. It would improve signal timing at Oceanside Boulevard and Crouch Street. It would implement, as I said earlier, new sidewalk on the north side of Crouch Street and install new ADA-compliant curb ramps at Crouch Street and Oceanside Boulevard. So the Planning Commission approved this project, as I said, in October of last year by a vote of four to one. The city received an appeal of that determination from Ms. Johnson on the 19th of October. The principal points of appeal are traffic congestion, traffic safety and speeding, extended emergency response times, noise and air pollution, and conflict with city council mission statement. I'll address each of those points and provide staff's response to those now. First point of appeal, at least 50% of Project ADT, that's average daily traffic, will cut through Fire Mountain. This claim is countered by the local traffic study, the LTS, which examined 11 intersections and six roadway segments, conducted two separate traffic counts. That study indicates that roughly 15% of project traffic ADT would use Fire Mountain streets. That would principally be the Skylark Downs Ivy corridor, and that would be roughly 10% of total trips, and the Crouch and Grand View corridor would account for 5% of total trips. Second point of access to Oceanside Boulevard, that really should say, two additional points of access to Oceanside Boulevard should discourage cut-through trips into the neighborhood. So again, Crouch Street would be opened with that extension of Ocean, South Oceanside Boulevard, open to access to Oceanside Boulevard from State Tree and Commerce Street to the west, which is currently not the case. The appellant has provided no empirical evidence in support of the assumption that at least 50% of project traffic would cut through Fire Mountain. When we talk about peak period traffics, we're talking about morning and afternoon commute periods typically. What traffic engineers will do is study a two-hour period in the morning and in the afternoon and determine what that peak hour is. In the case of this project and the LTS prepared for this project, the peak hour in the morning is 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., and the afternoon peak hour is 4:15 to 5:15 p.m. Based on, based on the ratios that you see above, the 15% of trips going into the residential area as opposed to coming out onto Oceanside Boulevard, the project would theoretically generate 21 additional peak hour trips in the afternoon during the afternoon peak period on Skylark Downs and Ivy within that particular corridor. So to put that in perspective, that is one additional trip every three minutes, or 2.9 minutes during that peak period. All intersections and roadway segments continue to operate at acceptable levels of service with the project. And I want to make this important point. The LTS, the local traffic study, takes an extremely conservative approach to estimating vehicle trips generated by the commercial component of the project, assuming trip generation associated with fast-food drive-through restaurants. Per Sandag's Trip Count Guidance, 3,000 square feet of fast-food drive-through operations, and remember, the commercial component is 3,000 square feet. 3,000 square feet of drive-through operations would generate 2,100 average daily trips, which would account for over half of the total estimated ADT or average daily trips associated with this project. The project would not, could not accommodate fast-food drive-through restaurants. It's not designed for that. Had the LTS applied a more realistic trip generation rate to the commercial component of the project, for example, Transit Hub Retail, which is essentially what we will see here, what we would see here, with an estimated trip generation rate of 40 average daily trips per 1,000 square feet of floor area, the total estimated Project ADT would be roughly half of what the LTS assumes. Second point of appeal, the project would contribute to traffic safety issues on Ivy Road. Traffic surveys that have been done by OPD and by our Traffic Engineering Division show no significant rate of speeding on Ivy Road. The curve in Ivy Road has been depicted in the appeal as a blind curve. That has been studied, the dimensions of that curve accord with our minimum motorist site distance requirements, so the curve is not a blind curve technically. In instances, you've seen in the appeal photographs of instances of commercial truck traffic, emergency vehicles blocking traffic lanes, vehicles turning around in private driveways. This is, you know, essentially anecdotal. There's no direct relationship between these incidences and the project, which of course The third point is that project-induced traffic would create excessive noise and air pollution. An air quality assessment was prepared for this project. It is part of the environmental document, and it indicates no significant impacts associated with air quality. Noise analysis was also conducted and indicated no potentially significant traffic-related noise associated with this project in those areas where most of the trips would go, which would be Crouch Street and South Oceanside Boulevard. So those limited number of trips that would go into the residential area would not be expected to have significant noise or air quality impacts. The fourth point of appeal is that the project conflicts with the city council mission statement and approval thereof would conflict with the city council mission statement. Here's the mission statement. "The city council's mission is to represent the citizens of Oceanside, make policy decisions, exercise fiscal responsibility and authority, serve the best interest of all citizens, and ensure that Oceanside is a desirable place to live, work, do business, and visit. Benefits associated with this project include housing, including the 30 income-restricted units I mentioned earlier in the midst of a statewide housing crisis. Secondly, additional commercial services within the Oceanside Boulevard and synergies between the residential component and the commercial component of the site. So we would expect that much of the patronage of the ground-floor commercial space would be coming from the project itself. This project will be a deterrent to longstanding illegal activities in that vicinity by putting eyes on the street, providing natural surveillance, the in-keeping with what we call SEPTED principles, crime prevention through environmental design. I'm sure that many in this room are familiar with the extent of illegal habitation, illegal camping that occurs in this area, and that is in part because of the lack of natural surveillance of those sloped areas and this, adjacent sloped areas and this property itself. Additional benefits, we require in instances like this that fiscal impact studies be prepared. Such a study was prepared. That study shows a net positive fiscal impact for the city in that the project would generate more tax revenue for the city than it would cost the city in city services. The project would restore a segment of sensitive habitat, a very degraded segment of Loma Alta Creek adjacent to the project frontage, and establish new barriers to human access in that area, which has long been a problem and impacted, significantly impacted water quality in that area. The traffic and pedestrian improvements were discussed on a prior slide. And this project would be at this location, given its type, given its nature, consistent with the community vision that this body accepted in November of 2021, and the smart and sustainable corridors of civic plan, an essential part of the city's second phase of its general plan update, which will be coming before you sometime later this year for adoption. And I'm happy to talk more specifically about how this project is consistent with the community plan, excuse me, the specific plan and the community vision. So pursuant, as I said earlier, to our zoning ordinance, city council may only consider issues raised in appeal filed, the appeal filed with the city. Staff finds that the appellant has not provided any empirical basis to warrant overturning the Planning Commission approval. And I want to make you aware, and you probably already are, that we've received recent correspondence from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, providing guidance to the council, to our decision-makers, on this decision-making process, emphasizing the city's limited discretion over density bonus projects as specified in state density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act and reinforced by case law. The letter notes that the project site is included in the city's housing sites inventory in our most recent housing element, and the letter states that HCD has enforcement authority, which enables the imposition of fines of $10,000, a minimum fine of $10,000 per housing unit should it be determined that the project was denied for reasons not justifiable. So honestly, if there's anything more staff would like to see from this project, it's more density. It's more housing units at this walkable and transit-served location. However, staff understands how difficult it is for such projects to provide the structured parking, the subterranean parking that higher density would require in this location. Staff recognizes Fire Mountain as a unique and attractive and comfortable neighborhood that its residents highly value and seek to protect. We appreciate concerns about cut-through traffic in this neighborhood and its potential impact on public safety and quality of life. However, staff finds that the Ocean Creek project would not measurably degrade existing traffic conditions in the areas of concern noted in the appeal, or anywhere for that matter. In fact, it seems more likely that the previously noted improvements would result in better traffic conditions, better connectivity, better roadway connectivity.
You'll have your chance to speak. Okay.
Better roadway connectivity, greater efficiency in our roadway network, and more options for motorists in terms of their egress from Fire Mountain. Moreover, as stated earlier, staff finds that the project would provide a variety of other public benefits. Those were outlined on a prior slide, many of which would be enjoyed by residents of Fire Mountain. So consequently, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution upholding Planning Commission approval of a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment, ASKIA, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, development plan, and request for density bonus to allow a mixed-use development comprising 295 rental apartment units and 3,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space on an 18.9-acre property at the southwest corner of South Oceanside Boulevard and Crouch Street. We do have additional slides that speak to general plan consistency, zoning ordinance compliance, parking, traffic study findings, habitat restoration. We have in the room traffic experts, both on the city side and the project team side, to respond to specific questions about traffic. I can share any of those slides at your request. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. We now will be hearing from the appellant and the applicant. Each one will have up to 20 minutes to present on their case, starting with the appellant, and that is Candace Johnson. Right, and as you're setting up, I wanted to let you know. Ms. Johnson, that you will have up to 20 minutes. As the appellant, you will have, you could reserve time for rebuttal, okay? Of those 20 minutes.
I hope to do that.
If you want to reserve two, you know, five minutes, whatever. After the appellant speaks, presents her case, then we will hear from the applicant. The applicant will also have 20 minutes and will not be able to reserve any time for rebuttal. And then after that, we will hear from the public. Everyone, you will not have, it's not necessary that you fill out a form prior to speaking. You'll be allowed to speak, even if you haven't filled out a form, for up to three minutes. How many, how many people do we have that have submitted a form?
We have currently 35 registered speakers.
Thirty-five, okay. So 35, so that means we're going to cut it down to two minutes. Two minutes, start, if you wrote out something, please start making it closer to two minutes. But you will have, you will have your time to speak. All right. Are you ready, Ms. Johnson?
I am.
Okay.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and council members. I'm Candy Johnson, a California native and Fire Mountain resident. As a licensed real estate broker and lender, I understand the need for low-income and high-density housing. In fact, most of Fire Mountain residents are low-income renters. Fire Mountain residents are appealing Ocean Creek due to both health or safety impacts per Government Code 65589.5D2. Location, location is so important in real estate, but Crouch Skylark is not the right location. This area is overburdened with no current or future plans for improvements. Future Mountains, Fire Mountain suffers from too many cut-through VMTs, vehicle miles traveled, and I'll use that a lot tonight, and even JPI's William Morrison spoke of the traffic problem. The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission's code of ethic warns to pay special attention to the interrelatedness of decisions and long-range consequences of present actions. Thank you, Commissioner Simons, for faithfully serving your public's interests by denying approval and suggesting more attention be given to the impacts of Fire Mountain. SB 10 gives local authority the ability to decide. Fire Mountain's exponentially increasing cut-through VMTs are affecting both our health and safety. Ironically, all Oceanside City publications cite "Safety First." Downs Ivy should not be a cut-through. Down Street was established in the 1860s, and there were no sidewalks. We're a walkable neighborhood with no sidewalks, and this mom on the top right is walking her baby in the street inches away from vehicles. The city always says, "We hate sidewalks," but they have their place. The Planning Commission-approved Whaley Street project with no sidewalks and two Fire Mountain residents appealed to get a sidewalk to protect the children walking to school. When Oceanside made Downs Ivy's collector roads, our two-lane unwidable roads were expected to allow 9,000 VMTs daily. This is a serious health and safety issue. City, do you know the current VMTs on Downs and Ivy's cut-through? I don't believe VMTs are routinely monitored. What are the current emission levels? What are the current plans once we exceed that level of service? Aiding Ocean Creek's VMTs, adding Ocean Creek's VMTs significantly and adversely impacts our health and safety. Downs Ivy is on a screened-out bicycle master plan, making it an unhealthy, unsafe route for cyclists, which is another reason to remove this route as a collector road. Cyclists obey vehicle laws, yet two weeks ago, I came within seconds of being rear-ended as I turned right into my driveway, and three men cyclists sped through a stop sign and almost hit me. Please, no more fatalities for Fire Mountain like the two pedestrians near Crouch and Oceanside on Thanksgiving Day. Crouch Skylark is a unique, offset, unsignalized intersection with vehicles merging from the two streets and at peak congestion. And at peak congestion, it takes more than five signals to exit Fire Mountain. This bottleneck is impaired by 68 weekday sprinter stops 30 minutes apart. Future plans will double track the trains and increase sprinter stop intervals of 15 to 20 minutes. Crouch Skylark has a grade of E in 2017. So to justify adding an additional 30,075 VMTs and 800 charter high school students' mutes would add ocean, and adding Ocean Creek would only worsen that score. This is a safety nightmare. The circulation element says that if a development causes an intersection to be worse than a D, it's a significant health and safety impact, and the developer has to provide feasible mitigation measures. JPI's project focus was basically 1,500 feet and Oceanside Boulevard to the five freeway. JPI feels that only 15% of the tenants' VMTs will cut through Fire Mountain. If JPI lived here, they would know that the number's closer to 50% cut through due to the countless amenities and the 78 on the south side. Ivy between Avocado and Downs is less than 1,000 feet, and it has 100 degree blind curve. I don't know what Russ's comment for the blind curve was, but. Four years ago, it was a safe, walkable, quiet, peaceful road. Now it's a dangerous speedway with noise and air pollution, and we don't need more VMTs for Ocean Creek. Ivy Avocado's congested bottleneck is the direct cut through route one mile from the proposed project. We don't know the current VMT count for Ivy between Downs and Avocado since the city monitored the wrong Ivy part, and the count was 729 per day. The count where I live is more like 729 per hour. And that includes fully loaded semi trucks weighing up to 40 tons. These trucks ignore the posted signs that say "commercial vehicles over five tons are prohibited." They grossly overweight, these grossly overweight trucks are damaging our roads and any pipes or cables under the roads. Eighteen wheelers even park on our little roads. Isn't this citable? Fire trucks and ambulances drive past my home several times a day. This is classic. If 911 responds to a heart attack or a house fire, but they can't get there due to congestion, the city should feel responsible for not listening to our pleas. Hopefully, local authority recognizes that health and safety take precedence in state law. This 295 unit project will impact 41,000 Fire Mountain residents' lives by increasing VMTs cutting through Fire Mountain, adding safety concerns, noise pollution, and toxic emissions. Emergency responders need to respond timely to the 16,000 residences on 130 streets. Unsighted accidents happen often on Ivy. Two weeks ago, a motorcycle cut through Ivy, through Fire Mountain speeding, lost control on the curve, and laid there for 10 minutes. Last year, OPD did a traffic count on my street, and it was 4,225 per day, which is 265 during peak hours. I believe right now it's over 9,000 a day. Fire Mountain is surrounded by the most heavily traveled roadways in Oceanside, except for the 76. In 2017, there were a half a million vehicles a day on the roads surrounding Fire Mountain. How many cut through? Every time I come across Fire Mountain, I'm accompanied by at least five cut throughs since I live close to one of the ingress egresses. Crouch Skylark is the only north ingress egress in Fire Mountain. This couldn't have been a worse location to add a project the size of Ocean Creek. Plus, a charter school and opening up South Oceanside will make this the worst design. So, so far, our city has not been able to fix the Crouch Skylark intersection, which is the most impacted bottleneck in Fire Mountain. Crouch from Skylark to Oceanside is a complicated cluster mass. It's a school route, transit area, bike route, significant emissions, and VMTs, so health and safety are impacted. Traffic increased citywide since 2017. So it doesn't seem credible that the city's grade E in 2017 improved to a grade B for JPI's 2022 LTS. Truth be said, if Ocean Creek's additional VMTs increased 22% using 2017 data, the volume would be substantially more, more using current data. So JPI would have to provide feasible mitigation measures for health and safety reasons. Furthermore, Oceanside Boulevard at Crouch needs three lanes each way by 2030 to fully mitigate this intersection. But traffic engineering said this is not adequate, there's not an adequate right of way to accommodate a six lane road. So Oceanside Boulevard's six, six lane, or Oceanside Boulevard's failing conditions will deteriorate. So ask why should this project be approved at this particular site with so many adverse impacts? Computer simulations are only as good as the data input, to say it nicely. Pictures speak volumes. This is not a self, this is not a health and safety slide, but I was just curious. Crouch Station was currently listed as a transit priority area, but not according to the San Diego 743 map, which shows TPAs only as far north as Del Mar. It's also not currently a quality, a high quality transit corridor because the breeze does not come every 15 minutes at peak commute. It only comes every 50 minutes. Yet the LTS says both of those things. Ocean Creek is underparked by 94 spaces. And because of the health and safety hazards for the children and the overly congested crazy Skylark-Crouch intersection, parking on Crouch or Skylark should be prohibited. This is definitely a safety hazard because of U-turns and parallel parking. Fire Mountain's 41, oh, hang on a second. Oh, yeah. Fire Mountain's 41,000 residents are exposed to unhealthy toxic emissions daily. Here's a detailed list of the substances in exhaust emissions. And there's both long term and short term health effects. There's four schools within one mile of Ocean Creek, soon to be five. There's kids ages six to 18, which will include Ocean Creek children. Children and elderly are most susceptible to the toxic exhaust emissions. Just so you know, I now have a daily cough, and I know it's from the heavy particulate matter from these emissions because it's so heavy where I live. And I work from home, and I garden. I've listed some of the California bonus density laws, and the new laws exempt SEQA. The laws just keep on coming. Thank you, Sacramento. California state codes allow local government to ensure health and safety for their residents. So local government needs to thoroughly analyze the existing and future effects of approving this project in accordance with government code 65589.5D2. Oceanside's District 5 supervisor, Jim Desmond, said it well when he, when he beat the half cent gas tax. And I paraphrase, "While I support public transit, it's not practical for all of North County. I believe that any new plan must include improvements." And for those of you that currently have low water pressure, I know the water company came out and tested my water pressure, and they can do the same for you. So I urge you to get a baseline now, just in case. The next three pages are conclusions, but I have superseded those because when I put this together, I was in a hurry because I had to go the next morning, which is the day this was due, to get my license updated. So I'm going to go to the last slide, and I'm going to talk about the paperwork that I handed out to you guys. And I'm only going to read the first three, the first three recommendations, and I've prioritized them. So in conclusion, maybe deny putting Ocean Creek at that intersection for health and safety reasons. I know your hands are tied because of Sacramento, but I do believe that there's substantial reasons to, to decline it. And, you know, if you want me to call Governor Newsom, I will. No. We do not want any Ocean Creek access from Crouch Street on the east side. The Ocean Creek, its only access should be to the South Oceanside Boulevard. We don't need access to South Oceanside. Crouch Skylark is such a complicated intersection, and I gave you a little map showing how complicated it is. We've got an offset of Skylark and the access to the project, which would be the new South Oceanside. There's two merging intersections within 200 yards of each other at Skylark and Oceanside Boulevard. There's a transit station, which is screened out. There's children walking to and from school. Downs and Ivy are collector roads that cut through for the circulation element. And the Downs Ivy bicycle master plan route is also screened through, and it comes through Downs Ivy. We, we also suggest that there is no parking on Crouch Street or Skylark Drive. And those, again, are for health and safety reasons. There's going to be parallel parking and U-turns, and we want these to be non-issues. So at this point, I'd like to reserve the rest of my time if I need it. And thank you for your time.
You have 6 minutes and 8 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant. And if you could state your name. And you will have up to 20 minutes to present.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is William Morrison. I represent the applicant. We have a lot of my team members here in these blue shirts that say "support transit oriented housing." So you're going, okay. I'm just going to go over a couple of high level items tonight. Russ did a great presentation. And then we could dedicate the rest of the time to council discussion. I brought my traffic engineer and my land use council with me tonight as well for any real detailed questions. Wanted to go over how we got here. This site's been identified by the community through the Oceanside Boulevard Vision Plan, general plan in 2013, three sand egg, smart growth opportunities. The current update that's happening that Russ is running, a lot of the community workshops are pointing at this site for housing. And Russ mentioned the smart and sustainable corridor. This is a catalyst project for this side of the five freeway east of the five on Oceanside Boulevard, where a lot of the development and improvements are happening on the other side on the coast road. So it's been under the community's control for a long time to envision this for housing and mixed use. For traffic, again, I brought my traffic engineer. He can answer those detailed questions. I know staff can as well, but that's really not in my, not in my strong suit. But we've been working with staff for about a month now, responding to the appellant and her team's questions. And I know we didn't resolve all her concerns, but I believe we are very forthcoming with all the information that we had extracted from the local transportation study to help her understand and answer her questions. But I wanted to make sure that you guys believe that we didn't turn a deaf ear to the community. We went through this process. We had the unfortunate timing of doing our first traffic count on March 17, 2020. That was the day after they sent all the students home from the pandemic. So we had to redo our traffic study one more time, and we did that on March 16, 2021. That became our public document at that time that we submitted to the city. And it had gone through a public review. On December 21, 2021, the appellant wrote a very long and detailed letter to staff and the council detailing a lot of the issues that she's gone over tonight. On January 31, 2022, we reached out to the appellant to say, "Can we work with you on some of your issues and have a one-on-one meeting to discuss the intersections and things that you're concerned about?" We were not granted that opportunity to speak with her. She did then send a letter to staff and city council, again, detailing a lot of these issues and detailing additional intersections that she was requesting to be studied. We worked with staff to go through what the city felt was appropriate to expand our traffic study. And we included more of the intersections that the appellant had asked for. And the conclusion still came back that the intersections were operating at a sufficient level. So just to make sure that, you know, we, we reached out to the appellant early on. We worked with them. We updated the traffic report. And then we continued to work with staff on the traffic report until it was published on May 31, 2022. So that time between March 8 and, and May 2022, we did a lot more work, listening to the community and what staff was asking. So that is all I really wanted to go over tonight with you all. Russ did a great job. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys had the opportunity to speak to myself or my traffic engineer or my land use council. So thank you very much this evening.
Thank you. So this is the time to hear from the public. We're going to go ahead. Some people took the time to fill out a sheet, the sheet to let us know that they wanted to speak, which is why we were able to get that 34, 35 count, initial count. So we're going to go ahead and start with those folks. And then after we've exhausted that list of folks who have requested to speak by submitting, filling out that sheet of paper, that slip, then I will open it up for anyone else who wishes to speak. Again, we're going to be allowing you to speak for two minutes. All right, two minutes. When you approach the podium, please state your name and then go ahead and speak for up to two minutes. And could you take over that?
Yeah, for two minutes. Two minutes.
Two, two. We've cut it down to two minutes. Sorry, we have 35 minimum people who are going to want to speak. So, and then there might be some, some additional ones. So we're down to two minutes.
So our first speaker is Kelly O'Neil, to be followed by Scott Ashton, to be followed by Sophia Ayad. Kelly?
Hello, my name is Kelly O'Neil, and Oceanside is my hometown. JPI's Ocean Creek project looks very similar to what is known around the world as the 15 Minute City. These projects are presented as mixed use areas and push the idea that this is the only way left to live, subduing us into believing that we must give up the automobile and become reliant on public transportation, electric bikes, centralized EV stations, and centralized digital access that can all be turned off with one switch on a whim by outside entities, none of whom we have elected. So here's one in Paris. All right, there's one in Paris. Everything is in a 15 minute radius on foot or bike. There's a goal is to, to fewer CO2s is what they say. But if you scratch below the surface and do a little research, you'll find that behind the CO2 and sustainability word is interesting relationships. Here's JPI's website, relationships, Carla Group. They own the Dominion voting machines. They owned them during the 2020 election. Here's the Pissker Group, who owns all these patents on fireplace, electric heating sections, electric, 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 a bunch of construction patents. And here's a 15 minute city in Trenpe, Arizona, which is no cars at all are allowed. So be careful because I think they're going to use the trafficking, the traffic as a bargaining chip to push this project through. Here's a 15 minute city in LA. Here's another one in LA that looks like Mission Avenue. So the 15 minute city is an international idea. It comes from the World Economic Forum. The World Economic Forum is where they call us useless feeders, and they believe in hacking human.
Thank you. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Okay, they believe in hacking human beings. They are asserting authority where they have no legal authority. Our.
Please wrap up. Sorry, don't, don't show anymore. Just wrap up.
The state is pushing through. They, they don't have legal authority to.
Ms. O'Neil, wrap up your comments. We've got 34 people behind you.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up with the $500 billion surplus we have that you gave to the Bank of New York Mellon, which is another, which is an international bank.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is doing international trade.
Thank you.
You're turning Oceanside into water bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry. We want to hear from everybody. Mr. Scott Ashton?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Ashton, CEO of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this evening to express the chamber's support for this project. Oceanside's share of the regional housing needs assessment for the current cycle is approximately 5,400 housing units. And as the RENA report shows, we need housing of all types to meet the needs of a wide variety of income levels of our current and future workforce. This 295 unit multifamily project meets local housing needs while improving the surrounding neighborhood and preserving open space and habitat. The 30 affordable units will also offer more inclusive local housing opportunities. The 30 affordable units will also offer more inclusive local housing opportunities. This transit-friendly project will bring a sense of community to an area that could benefit from foot traffic that will support neighboring retail and restaurant businesses. With 3,000 square feet of retail space, it will bring more convenient dining and shopping to transit commuters and surrounding neighborhoods. Having hundreds of new residents in the area as well as 24/7 onsite management helps mitigate concerns about criminal activity in the area. Developer JPI has put forward a responsible and well-thought-out project that will bring new life to this area. Its location ensures easy sprinter access for our workforce, to manufacturing jobs to the east, and hospitality jobs at our coast. We believe that the Ocean Creek Project is solidly in line with the chamber's housing creation policy, which is to facilitate and assist the creation of a full range of housing options necessary to accommodate Oceanside's population and economic growth. Therefore, we urge your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Ayad?
And as we call your name or as your name pops up on the screen, please start making your way down. It'll make this go a lot quicker. Thank you. Sophia?
Mayor Sanchez and members of the Oceanside City Council. My name is Sophia Ayad, and I'm here tonight representing the San Diego North Economic Development Council and speaking in favor of the proposed project adjacent to the Crouch Street Sprinter Station. As noted in the staff report, California is faced with a dramatic and daunting challenge in producing enough housing. Rents and median housing prices have risen to astronomical levels. The jobs-housing ratio in North County remains significantly out of balance, with nearly three net new jobs chasing every one new home brought onto the market. In Oceanside, the median house price has risen over the past year by more than $300,000, a compounded rate of increase of 9.9%. This imbalance in demand and supply is the reason that the number-one issue that employers throughout North County tell us inhibits their ability to grow and create additional good jobs is the lack of attainable housing. This project adds nearly 300 units to North County's housing supply. It helps address long-term issues relating to smart growth by providing density next to a transit station. It enhances Loma Alta Creek and provides sidewalk and street improvements to Oceanside Boulevard. It is the right project in the right place at a critical time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I urge you to approve the project.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. Homeowners representative down at Los Alana Mobile Village, which is down the creek from this project. What was not presented was the effects of the overpavement or the black upperpulation from this development onto my community. Because what happens is that when there is pavement, it stops the storm from taking and going down into the ground that currently takes place. And what the courts have ruled is that when there is pavement that takes and stops that perpulation, that development and the city is responsible for taking and making sure that homes and citizens and businesses are to be protected from that type of development. And what happens is, what is going to take place? That was not explained into this presentation. Also, there was no presentation from Oceanside School District on the effect on the students coming down the hill. That was not explained, as well as the need for an emergency exit onto Crouch in case Loma Alta Creek takes and impacts that development. These were not explained. This is very important for the emergency exit for those homeowners and businesses.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Javier Santiso. I'm a representative with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters, and I saw, I noticed that they said this project would be a deterrent to criminal activities, right? I highly doubt that. So we're going to talk about hole framing, wages owed to Jose Aguilar. This is public information on a project at Jefferson Pacific Beach where JPI was a developer. This is the first instance of criminal activity. We'll go down to downtown San Diego. Wage theft is a crime, so I don't know how you're going to fix that right there. JPI was cited $1.7 million of wages owed to workers. JPI is currently working, performing work in downtown San Diego development, and also hole wood framing, 20-plus carpenters wages owed of over a week, two weeks owed for these carpenters, all right? All enough, San Diego Gas and Electric also has beef with JPI because of their irresponsible practices, all right? Now, on February 9 of 2022, we did sit down in a virtual meeting with JPI, and we asked, Will Morrison, what are you going to do to safeguard the working? What are you going to do to safeguard the local community? Wage theft is a crime, and the city of Oceanside should allow the time that JPI needs to get right with the community. My name is Javier Santiso, and thank you for your time.
My name is Jacinto Dominguez, and I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 619. As the father of four little ones, I knew what it was to take my little boy into a hospital emergency room, and then after, after the work had been done, going and withdrawing the bulk of our savings to gladly pay for the services that had been provided for my son. I worked for a non-union company, okay? I know what it is to work countless hours of overtime, weekends, to provide for my family. And yet, because of those hours of overtime that I was working, I realized that I wasn't able to be with the family that I was striving so hard to provide for. I know what it's like to work on developments where there are designated houses for low income and realizing that because of my wages, I wasn't able to, I couldn't qualify to buy one of the low-income houses that I was helping to build. A dedicated company man in a position of leadership with no insurance for my family, for myself, no retirement to buy into, and a low wage, not a livable wage. But that was pre-union. Now you're looking at the proud father of four university graduates. Degreed, degreed, producing public citizens, private citizens, I'm sorry. Their blue collar, their blue collar father was able to help them with their homework.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Can you wrap it up?
He was able to be the father, and that's why the union, I was reaping the benefits that the union provides for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Sanchez, council members, good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Jorge Vera Montes. I'm also represented with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters. What they, we all need that housing. We absolutely know that, right? But what they don't talk about is the workforce that builds it. JPI stands to make generational wealth here in this city of Oceanside with this project. But then nobody ever thinks about the human being that builds this, the exploited workforce that you've seen that my coworker put there in front of you. Council members, I'm here before you today to say, hey, take this back, look at all the lines, listen to the rest of the cities of Oceanside about the traffic, put everything together, think about it, and hold JPI to give us a commitment, not only to the city of Oceanside, to the carpenters, not to exploit the workforce to build these projects. And you're probably thinking, this is a union, non-union thing. It's not. It's about being human. It's about giving the opportunity to a human being to make a decent living. They're going to make money off of it. Let's take care of the workforce. Thank you.
My name is Chris Allen. I'm with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters, and I see a lot of supporters of this project and says support transit-oriented housing. But what's the price? You've heard what happens with the subcontractors that JPI utilizes. You hear tax fraud. You hear labor abuse. You hear things that are unspoken, but these are people, these are the working class. These are the people that spend money in Oceanside. And the contractors that want to cheat those workers, they're cheating by paying, by not paying taxes, not paying public works projects, kind of like Fire Station Number One right across the street. All these criminal contractors that are utilized by JPI on multiple projects in Southern California will be cheating Oceanside. So with all the concerns and direct impacts to the Oceanside community and workforce, I ask you this: Please take the necessary time in order to make sure that these issues are addressed, the community isn't impacted, and you protect the working class. Thank you.
Stacy Green?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Stacy Green, and I am a, I've been in San Diego County for over 50 years, and I raised my family here. And I'm here to, in support and ask you to support this well-thought-out project by a developer who's very well-respected in the building community that I've worked in for the last 25 years.
Order, please.
That being said, I want to give you an example. I am a parent to an adult child who taught school up here in the North County and was part, well-educated, and part of the workforce housing, but couldn't afford to live here. And I have friends who are second and third-generation residents of Oceanside. My best friend has two daughters that are my daughter's age, adults, and who have left Oceanside, and they would have been third generation to live here, but there wasn't enough housing that, as a workforce, hard-working individuals could afford to live here. And this project, to me, represents what the type of housing is today. It's well-thought-out, and it's adding to the infrastructure. I implore you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Gluckster?
Yes. Good evening. I'm glad to see that there are two new council members on the council, and perhaps they are reasonable, and consider what some of the things that have been directed at the council tonight are all about. I had a conversation with Ryan Keim, who is our council member recently, and I think I can bring this into a nutshell. This is a fight between the state legislature and cities in Oceanside, excuse me, Oceanside being one of them. This is an edict that's come down from on high, and there's very little that the city council can do to adjust without incurring fines. And I don't know how hard we can fight as a city in order to overcome that. I think that perhaps Sand Egg may be the possibility. They represent the city. I know when I moved here almost 25 years ago, I left a nice condo on the ocean in Solana Beach and came because this is a gem of an area, Fire Mountain, and we will lose it as it is if this project goes in. It's too large for not having the problems of traffic. I see trucks going through now, I have for the last year, from Walmart and from others coming west on the 78 who want to avoid the traffic at the 5 and 78. And the fact of the matter is, it actually was on Google Maps.
Sir, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you. I'm almost done. I hope that it'd be somehow reconsidered before it's too late.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and city staff. My name is Jeff O'Connor. Ocean Creek is consistent with the general plan, located near transit, will be built to sustainable standards. It will help with Oceanside's housing crisis, and most importantly, it will connect South Oceanside Boulevard. These check all the boxes for a great community. But most importantly, 265 families can call Ocean Creek home, and even more importantly than that, 30 additional families that would otherwise could not afford a home can now have a home. Please support Ocean Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adrian Luna?
Mayor Sanchez, city council, my name is Adrian Luna. Speaking in support of the project, I believe Ocean Creek, I believe the Ocean Creek project will accomplish two goals. One being that the state's regional housing needs allocations for the city of Oceanside, although this project would not complete the goal, does make progress at reaching those numbers. Secondly, approving this project will provide more housing opportunities to your city's workforce and young professionals like myself. Considering the mass exodus of workforce talent leaving California, if the city of Oceanside would like to retain its workforce talent, providing the housing opportunities that this project has will certainly aid to that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Alameo?
Okay, Cynthia Alameo, 1456 Ridgeway Street. I grew up on Fire Mountain since 1978, and on behalf of the family and the animals and Mother Earth, we oppose this mixed-use 295 apartments. Let me tell you something. Fire Mountain is a dormant island. That means it's asleep. When it wakes up, due to a natural disaster, guess what? You guys are on the bottom. You decided to put a project right on the outskirts of an island. So you know what? Someday, Mayor Sanchez is going to say, hey, run to higher ground. Don't be knocking at my door. Now, this land has a natural way to mitigate floods by slowing the flow of runoff during heavy rains. This land provides habitats for an incredible diversity of wildlife species, which we need, because without them, we'll have a rat-infested city, but you guys are trying to take that away. Now, take a bird view shot of Fire Mountain, and you know what? You're covering the whole land. Let the land breathe. What happened to our, let's go green, let's go for the earth? Don't talk to me when you're driving your electric cars, because that has nothing to do with saving the earth, except extracting the earth. So let's talk about safety consideration. I took photographs right at that transit center. You know what? A lot of things going on. Fire Department, the DEA, oh, what else? Police Department and FBI. Transit Center there, there's some danger there. And the AMPM robbed twice on gunpoint. Good luck, you guys. Good luck. So let's reserve this land because it's great for the environment, our health, and our safety. Let's provide safety for the people who live in it and want to live here. Let the land breathe, and you know what? A solution for all you for this project? Go to a higher land. Go to a higher mountain, because that's going to help you guys in the natural disaster that is happening now. God help the people up North California. And also, my time's up, but I want to thank you and...
Thank you very much.
Mayor Sanchez, I got a soft spot for you, not only because you're female, because you're Hispanic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dylan? Thank you, esteemed members of the town council, city council. My name's Wendy. I live in Terrace Gardens Mobile Home Park, which is a few blocks away from this proposed development. A very impassioned speech here on the part of a fellow environmentalist. This area is very important on the Pacific Flyway for the birds to be able to mate and make new birds and pass on. So in the area of sensitive habitat, let's talk about the people that are going to be impacted in the general neighborhood there. Traffic, you know, I have a good education from UCSD. I looked at the PowerPoint presented by Mr. Cunningham, and you know, I don't see any citations there. I don't see any links. I don't see any beginning timeframes. There's a quote come from him saying that the traffic jam goes, you know, from 4:15 for approximately an hour. That's pure fiction. It's a jam up on Oceanside Boulevard. It's a jam up on Oceanside Boulevard for the better part of two hours. I drove for a main, an important car rental service. I was delivering a Corvette up the back of Fire Mountain when a freighter came in and jackknifed in front of me. It was impassable. He passed my door by about this much, and I was driving a brand-new Corvette. These look like fictional claims to look at a presentation like that, and it's typical of towns that get brokered off where you have the Builders Industry Association come in with Caltrans and do a plop project. Only 30 homes here are going to be for low income--
Thank you very much.
--out of the total 290. That's a tokenism at its apex. Knock it off and go back to the drawing board.
Thank you very much.[665.28][665.28](APPLAUSE) Hale Richardson.
Hi, good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to participate tonight. I'm here to support Ocean Creek. I am a longtime resident of North County. I've lived here for about 20 years, and I don't live within the city of Oceanside. I'm right next door here in Carlsbad, but I frequent Oceanside a lot because you have great restaurants and because my kids like your Thai food and your cheese steaks better than those in our community. And I got to tell you, I'm here a lot, and I encourage friends and relatives to come and consider Oceanside, and some have bought in the new developments that you've built down here by the water. So I have to give you credit for doing a great job for that redevelopment and that enhancement that's in that area. I can tell you that I'm raising two kids, three nephews and a niece, and all three of them, excuse me, all five of them are very, very nervous about having to leave the area because they can't afford housing within San Diego. I'm desperate to have them stay here with us. I've watched too many good projects get rejected because of those that are frustrated. Those people are very fortunate to live in these areas, including myself. And then there's a lot of people that are speaking against development of new homes. Candidly, it's coming from here, fear. You hear a lot of fear in the room tonight, and they're fearful of sharing their communities, their roads, their parks, and generally their surroundings in general. This resistance is exactly why we have the exorbitant housing prices that we have today, and we have to get to a point where we're not perpetuating that further. Your role is very important, and this is the one thing I think both sides can agree on today, that you have to consider what's best for the entire community, not just right now, but into the future. We can't be concerned only about what the voices are of the people that are here right now. We have to be looking forward to the total prosperity of the future. The reason you hear groups like the EDC and the Chamber here tonight is because it's very, very clear that this is--
Thank you very much. Thank you.[792.16][792.16](APPLAUSE) Lenny Ray Cook. Could Leslie Rush also come to the podium as well as Patsy Downs so you can start lining
I tell you what I fear. I fear that the citizens have less say than the developers, and that's my concern. We all know that we need housing. Why do I fear that? Because when I went to a public meeting about this project, I was told that I should be lucky. I should be grateful for the benevolence of the developer to not propose more than what he put down there. I could do more. Oh, you could, oh, thank you very much, you could have screwed us even more, and I'm supposed to be grateful for that. I spent 10 minutes on Skylark trying to turn right during a school closure, you know, all the things you've heard. I was there. We end up making a U-turn in the middle of the street. There's, you know, just people are peeling off. It's pre-development like that. Let's get real, you guys are going to probably approve this, but to approve it without improving, the Crouch and Skylark intersection is near criminal. That is a terrible, terrible decision. We need the housing. Do it. We do not need that mess. It's already a mess. Sorry, getting a little excited here. I feel that the city is listening more to the developers. They are saying, "You have to do this because of the fear of some lawsuit. If you fought for us as much as you fight for them, well, maybe support them, supported us as much."[911.04][911.04](APPLAUSE) One last point: The cost for relieving the stress on our infrastructure, which was not intended for the amount of development that's going on right now, is not going to fall to the developers. It is going to fall to me and my fellow citizens through increased taxes and clogged streets.
Thank you very much.[933.36][933.36](APPLAUSE) Thank you.
I prepared three minutes, so I'll do my best.
Okay.
Council members, my name is Leslie Rush. I'm a 20-year resident of Fire Mountain community. As I've communicated with you recently and in the past, I'm greatly concerned about the high-density development and additional traffic this development will bring to our already congested neighborhood streets. Although I realize the difficult position the city has been placed in due to multiple laws coming from Sacramento, the city's hands are not completely tied, and you all have an opportunity to make the right decision about this development to ensure that the community of Fire Mountain does not incur any further irreversible damage. My three greatest concerns regarding Ocean Creek is the development proposal to open up South Oceanside Boulevard to Crouch Street, the lack of attention to the already difficult offset intersection at Crouch Street, and Skylark Drive, and the abundant, the absence of adequate parking for Ocean Creek's apartment dwellers and commercial space. By this development opening up South Oceanside Boulevard to Crouch Street, they will be, in essence, creating another new artery for vehicles to travel through Fire Mountain. Not only will these vehicles come from the Ocean Creek project itself, but vehicles coming from West Oceanside, as well as 80-plus students housed at the newly-established postal academy, will also be provided with direct access to our Fire Mountain streets. If Oceanside, South Oceanside Boulevard were to be opened at Crouch Street, the only way to enter from Skylark Drive would be to travel left, to, and across Crouch Street, where vehicles have the right-of-way and are generally backed up, both going north and south. This would be nearly impossible and certainly a significant safety hazard, and a live simulation has not been done to prove otherwise. Since the Ocean Creek project is not required to provide adequate parking for all the proposed residents and commercial tenant employees and patrons, any overflow parking will certainly spill over onto our nearby neighborhood streets. As I understand it, Skylark Drive certainly allows parking, currently allows parking on both sides of the street, and vehicles were parked along the heavily-traveled, no-sidewalk streets. This will certainly create severe safety hazards with tenants walking in traffic, making their way to Ocean Creek community and commercial storefronts. Fire Mountain should not be further compromised with your approval of this development.
Please, please finish your comments.
Instead, the city has the opportunity to further, to prevent further destruction of our Fire Mountain neighborhood of the impact of this developer's traffic and safety shortfalls. With that said, South Oceanside Boulevard should simply not be opened up to Crouch Street. The Ocean Creek development, along with the transit parking, should be entered and exited by way of State Street--
Please, please round it up.
--and Crouch Street as the cul-de-sac.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.[1099.11][1099.11](APPLAUSE) Patsy Downs.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. I'm Patsy Downs, and I live on Crespin's Drive, look right down at the Ocean Creek site. I have deep roots in Fire Mountain. The Downs family came here in 1931, and my husband was one-year-old then. In 1960, we built our home on the site, on the Downs property site, and I've lived here 63 years as of next month. So I've seen a lot--
That's fair. Wow. Congratulations.
Fire Mountain is crisscrossed with very narrow streets with no sidewalks, just a few scattered here and there. And it's very dangerous for people to walk on the streets. Now that Down Street was punched through to, down to Ivy, the secret was out. People could crisscross Fire Mountain, use it as a private freeway, and avoid the glut of traffic on El Camino and I-5. And now, down to the subject of Ocean Creek, with 295 apartments. With this many living spaces, there probably will be at least 600 residents. Where will they shop? Oh, yes, some will go west to CVS, Fraser Farms, Smart &amp; Final, but the majority are going to be going right through Skylark, Downs, and Ivy, down to the Walmart, big-box stores, Stater Brothers, Trader Joe's, access to 78 Scripps Clinic, and access also to Carlsbad Mall, which is anchored by Macy's, Kenny's, Regal Theater, many restaurants, and fitness centers. So this is what's going to happen to Oceanside of the Fire Mountain. We'll probably have somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500 miles a day, not miles, traffic a day on the, oh, gosh, oh, wait. I have some suggestions here. I think we should scale down the number of apartments. No egress onto Crouch from Ocean Creek, ingress only onto Ocean Creek from Crouch. Add lighted sidewalks, blinking stop signs on Down Street. Finish a sidewalk on east of Downs between Skylark and Dunson. Install a sidewalk on the north side of Skylark. I look forward to hearing what the city council is going to do--
Thank you very much.
--to mitigate the danger to our students walking to school--
Thank you very much. Thank you.[1267.20][1267.20](APPLAUSE) Deborah Dodaro.
Good evening, Mayor and council members of Oceanside. My name is Deborah Dodaro, and I have lived in Fire Mountain for 30 years. I come to you tonight to request that Ocean Creek development be postponed until all avenues for improvement have been considered and implemented. I come to you in good faith that you, the city council, is sincerely interested in the improvement of Oceanside community rather than the earning financial gains from developers. However, as much as I would like to believe this, we are all on the same team. It is difficult to do so. When this appellate meeting was first scheduled for December 21st, many of the Fire Mountain neighbors asked for a delay due to the meeting falling on the week of Hanukkah and Christmas. We received much pushback, and a letter from Russ Cunningham, principal planner for the city of Oceanside, responded with, quote, "We have competing interests here with the applicant, JPI, preferring to hold hearings before the year's end. It is generally staff's preference to move appeals forward as quickly as possible." Does this statement infer that developers have more importance and say and weight than present tax-paying Fire Mountain residents? Ocean Creek development has many flaws. Safety and negative traffic-related problems will be painfully evident. If you're designing your home or business, wouldn't you want the best design in functionality and value to promote your quality of life for all impacted? If you found errors, wouldn't you stop and ask a designer, or in this case, a developer, to go back into the drawing board and fix the problems? Tonight, you have this opportunity to avoid that sinking feeling of would've, could've, should've. And please listen to your community members who actually live in Fire Mountain, have truthful, accurate evidence that is not just anecdotal. We are worth the postponement of this impact. We are worth it because we are residents and we care about Oceanside. Please be the guidance that the planning department needs. Help us, help our community grow safely and wisely. Please postpone this development until improvements have been made. Thank you.
Thank you.[1386.24][1386.24](APPLAUSE) Janet Bledsoe-Lacy.
My name is Janet Bledsoe-Lacy, and I am appearing before you tonight in support of this project on behalf of my entire family. My husband and I purchased 3 3/4 acres of land in the eastern dead end of Grandview Street in Fire Mountain in 1975 for the purpose of establishing a forever home. This property was next to my parents' property of 4 1/2 acres, which they had purchased in 1960. My daughter currently, our daughter, currently lives there now, and it is her forever home. Also, our son lives on the corner in his forever home, next to my sister, Marva, who also sent you a letter in support of this project. That of this 8 1/2-acre family compound that we've got, approximately 2 acres is on the westerling side of vacant land of Down Street that has been part of the concern of the traffic issues presented this evening. And it is our belief that if you do nothing with this Oceanside Boulevard site, the traffic on Down Street is going to be increased because of the simple increase in population in the city of Oceanside. We particularly have lived in fear of what was going to be put into this Oceanside Boulevard property, and we're thrilled to find out that it was going to be a mixed-use residential complex, which carries with it far less traffic than what we could envision as being a Walmart or a Target. Even though this property is not zoned commercial at this time, we've lived here for 60-some years, and we have seen changes throughout Fire Mountain that happened that we never thought would be possible. Now, my family and parents and I have been through many wars in Oceanside and Fire Mountain fighting to preserve the land. This is one of them because this is the best use for this property. Thank you.
Thank you.[1514.48][1514.48](APPLAUSE) Seth Doros.
Good evening, council members. My name is Seth Doros. I have born and raised in San Diego County, lived in North County since 1976. Wasn't expecting to speak, other than to say that I support this project, obviously, and hope that the council will uphold the planning commission's approval of the project.
Good evening, council members. My name is Aaron, and I'd also like to say I support this project. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. I support this project. Thank you.[1564.64][1564.64](APPLAUSE)
So--
Hello, council. My name is Connor Kleppel, and I support this project.
Can I ask you, do you live in Oceanside?
Do I?
Do you live in Oceanside?
I do not.
Okay. So, yeah, no, I can, he can talk. No, they just want to say that they support it. Mr. Connor.
Oh, Connor was the one that just spoke. This is now Adam--
Yep, Adam Penby. Everyone hear me okay?
Adam Penby.
Support transit-oriented housing. Most if not all opposition tonight is from older residents in their 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s people, at my age group, okay? I'm in that age group. This is typical of most development projects in California, opposition from older folks like me and older. Apartments, condos, and houses are not affordable because we undersupply and have been undersupplied for decades, decades, everybody. Approve this project for my 16-year-old son that is here in the audience and several 20-year-olds in the city council chamber that will need apartments to live in. The dangerous opposition to all development projects will force the youth of our San Diego region to move out of state to afford apartments, condos, and housing. Approve this project for the youth of San Diego County. Fight for the youth of San Diego County.
So do you live in Oceanside?
I live in San Marcos for 20 years.
Okay, thank you.[1674.40][1674.40](APPLAUSE) Hold on, hold on. Please keep order, please keep order, okay? Thank you. Ms. George.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members. You're probably going to ask, "Do I live in Oceanside?" No, I don't. However, listen to this. I did support the Fenita Ranch project. That is a master-planned community by HomeFed that's in my neighborhood in Santee right by it. We have traffic concerns. I am the fourth generation in that community.
Santee?
My children are the fourth--
Mayor, can we take a recess, please?
--children who live in that community. So--
No, we're going to power through this.
Okay, so I'm back to concerned about my children having housing in San Diego. The city of Oceanside needs to meet their regional housing allocation goals, and that goal is approximately 5,400 units by 2029. Ocean Creek will help meet that goal with 295 homes, with 30 of those being lower income. The project meets many concerns. It's a transit-oriented project. It's adjacent to Sprinter Station on Crouch Street, and that project also meets the security, environmental, and the traffic concerns. They are going to extend South Oceanside Boulevard so that it will connect with Crouch Street. That means it's going to go all the way through. That will improve traffic flow. Finally, we are in a housing crisis. We need more housing. I'm personally concerned. I have four children--
Please, please, let her speak.
And I don't know about you, but I don't want my children, who are 30, living with me, and I want to see them live and continue to be here in San Diego, and it is very expensive. This project meets the criteria for the city of Oceanside and keeps us in good standing with the state of California and provides the housing we need. So thank you.
Wait, hold on. Do you, are you a lobbyist?
No. No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I just, I live in Santee.
Santee, right, got that.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. Listen, listen, order, order, please. We're going to hear from everyone. Order. Next is Juan Correa. Is Juan Correa present? Okay, next is Jared Sammet. Jared Sammet present? Hold on. Or we will take a break. Is Nick Tofoli here?
I'm Shane Larimer, before Nick.
I'm sorry, your name is?
Shane Larimer.
Where do you live?
Shane Larimer.
Jared before Shane. Jared here? Okay, so we have Shane Larimer-
Yep.
Okay, so Juan Correa was not present, right? Juan Correa was not present?
Mr. Correa was not present, neither was Jared Sammet.
Jared, not, not present. And so, we're now on Shane Larimer?
Yep.
Correct.
Good evening, council. My name is Shane.
Let, let, excuse me, excuse me. Let me be the chairperson here, okay?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask the rest of council if we could take a quick recess. Majority of council, can we take a quick recess? A five-minute recess?
We're going to go ahead and take a recess. I urge you to let the speakers speak. I will go ahead and ask a question about whether they live here or not, okay? So, we're going to take a five-minute recess to 7:35.
I'm the Democrats of San Diego County. I'm here to talk in support of the Ocean Creek project. The comments today have discussed traffic heavily, but that is missing the point entirely. This is 295 homes for people to live in, to build a life in. We have a dire housing shortage that has been ignored in this conversation. People are being forced out of our state, forced to live in cars or camp outside, forced to crowd into inadequate housing. Many students who graduate from our schools know they will never be able to live in this community. Young professionals have to grapple with the fact that they may never own a home. But most importantly, people are dying on the streets because of the lack of housing. At least 36 people died in 2022 in Oceanside because they lacked shelter. 36. To deny or delay desperately needed housing would be a horrible mistake. Please support new housing tonight and in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Where do you live, sir?
Where do I work?
Where do you live, sir?
I live in Pacific Beach.
PB, okay, thank you. No, listen, we had an agreement. I'm going to ask everyone where they live, but you all have to be quiet. You all have to be quiet, or we'll take another break. Okay? Thank you. Next person is Nick Tofoli.
Hello, mayor and council members. To get this out of the way, I live in South County.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do not live in Oceanside, nor can I afford to live in Oceanside. As a young professional, I am desperately trying to stay in San Diego, but due to the lack of affordability, it is hard to say, hard to say the least. So I speak in support of this project, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next person? Next person is Jeff Signer?
Signer. Good evening. Yes, my name is Jeff Signer. I'm a 37-year resident here of Fire Mountain. 29 years on Downs Freeway. It is a freeway. I mean, people going 50, 60s miles an hour all the time. And people like talking about losing lives. I feel like I'm going to lose my life every time I go and check my mailbox. That's, that's what I feel like. There's, there's no protection for pedestrians, and we're putting in more and more cars. Yeah, I've, I didn't do a study, but I've been here for 37 years, and I know what the traffic is like. And I know why it's gotten worse. And yes, we lost the battle down over the Fire Mountain, I forget what the name of it, the shopping center, you know, the yellow, yeah, the Yellow Ribbon Committee and all that stuff, and opened that up. And so, yeah, no wonder it's not as bad from what it has been, because it's already bad. It's just gotten that much worse. And I just have questions as to, you know, maybe we want to try to mitigate it in other ways. I know this is probably a done deal. Maybe we need to open up the backside of the Walmart. That didn't happen last time, not sure why. I don't know why that wasn't. But certainly it might give people more of a reason to go up Crouch Street rather than zipping over through Downs and Ivy in that way. Something to think about. I'm hoping that you're going to do a lot of mitigation, because quite frankly, every time I take a walk, it's a walk on the wild side. And that's, that's not the way it should be, a quiet little neighborhood like what we have here. And maybe for the future, we want to think about some places also, down the road, like say, the southeast corner of Rancho del Oro. There it is, right by El Corazon, the heart of Oceanside. You have a transit center there. You've got nice, big, wide roads with, with sidewalks and everything else. So something to think about.
Thank you, sir. Nicole Orlo? Nicole Orlo? No? Megan Mayhouse?
Good evening, city council and mayor. I, my name is Megan Mayhouse. I am a resident of Fire Mountain. And I'm not arguing, I'm, I'm actually a realtor. I'm not arguing that we don't need housing, because we do. And I know there's so much, housing is so expensive, and unaffordability is such an issue. But is this the best place to put this? I really want you guys to think about that. You know, also, the appellant was talking about traffic. And you've heard from a lot of residents, there is so much traffic already going through. And I am frightened, because there's no sidewalks. I walk my dog. I have to look behind me, like, next to me, around me, all the time to see if somebody's coming. So it gives me a little bit of fear that there's going to be further traffic moving through. There's speeding. And the other thing about the transit center, I really appreciate that people are so concerned about public transit, but nobody uses it. Nobody's using that public transit there. So it's a waste of space, and I don't think building another 300 units or 300 and something units is really going to help in using that transit center. Further, I wanted to finish what Leslie Rush had said. So, Fire Mountain should not be further compromised with our approval, with your approval of this development. Instead, the city has an opportunity to prevent further destruction to our Fire Mountain neighborhood, the impact of this developer's traffic and safety shortfalls by doing what is right for the community. With that said, South Oceanside Boulevard should simply not be opened up on Crouch Street. The Ocean Creek Development, along with the transit parking, should be entered and exited by way of State Tree Drive with Crouch Street as a cul-de-sac. By removing that component of the project, many of the traffic and safety issues this project presents will be eliminated, and some of the additional vehicle cut-through traffic to Fire Mountain mitigated. Vehicle parking along Skylark Drive should be prohibited with red curbs painted and enforced. This will ensure that Ocean Creek, not Fire Mountain, is responsible, I'm almost done, is responsible for any parking of its residence that is not provided by the developer and this project. Approving the Ocean Creek project with these caveats and compromises will be the best possible outcome for all involved. So, we know it's like you're going to pass it, but please consider the neighborhood and the residents there so that we can make it a safe place for us to live and still enjoy the homes we live in.
Thank you, Ms. Mayhouse. Patty Bartlett? Is Patty Bartlett here? Okay, Tina Lee? Is there a Tina Lee? All right, Mike Bullock?
Came up quick. Yeah, Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Mike Bullock. I live at 1,800 Bayberry Drive in Fire Mountain. And this is smart growth. And nobody else is going to talk about this, so I've got to do it. You know, we have a code-red climate emergency. The Secretary General of the UN has said we are solidly on a path to an unlivable planet. He also has said this. We are driving towards a climate hell with our foot on the accelerator. He also said this, and this is really the most frightening thing that he said. We are dangerously close to a point of no return. So, ideally, the project and the Sprinter Station will be looked at as one functioning development, and it would be required to have a specified, shared car parking system that would reduce VMT, something we desperately need to do. A system that is designed, installed, and operated by a third-party vendor. The vendor would then be available to do that for existing development. The existing developments that are most likely to ask that vendor to install a car parking system at their existing development are employers who want to treat their employees to a system that lets them, the employees, decide what they want to do with the money they earn. Free car parking is a really bad car parking system. The employees that continue to drive every day at such a development would need to break even. And to make this happen, they would need an add-in payment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bullock.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is a time for the public to speak on this very specific issue. If you, if you did not fill out a slip, that's fine. You can please come up, approach the podium, state your name, and speak for up to two minutes, all right?
I'm Mike Bland. I do live in Oceanside, but I do not live in Fire Mountain. I live in Henni Hills. And I'm one of those pasty people that drive through Fire Mountain every single day to go to those shopping centers. When I come out of Henni Hills and I drive straight across El Camino Real into Fire Mountain, I usually have a stream of cars behind me doing the same exact thing. So these safety issues that these residents of Fire Mountain has brought up are 100% correct. I do not agree with the traffic report, I'm sorry, because I've seen it way too many times. You know, we have a new police chief. We have a new fire chief. And I know the council probably gets some input from them, but I'm wondering, have they really taken the time, and I'm challenging them, to go up to Fire Mountain, talk to their personnel, their firefighters, and their motorcycle cops, and get some really good feedback of what's happening up there in Fire Mountain with those safety issues that the residents have brought up? Because I think the council members would get a new insight. And maybe there is some things that can be done. I'm not per se against the housing development, but these safety concerns are a real concern, and I think the council needs to present that. So that five years from now, two years from now, and there's a traffic accident there, someone has tragically killed a child, school kid or something, it's going to be this fault of this council. So take a hard look at this and get better input other than just from the planning commission and this traffic report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Go ahead, did you want to speak?
Yes, my name is Renata Engel, and I'm an Oceanside resident. I live in the Cavalier Mobile Home Park, and I'm approaching this from a little different direction. Cavalier is going to be bracketed by two developments that, assuming this one is approved by council, Ocean, this one, and also The Breeze, which is to the west of Five. And we egress right onto Oceanside Boulevard at the Five intersection, which is a non-adjustable intersection. And we have had, over the years, a huge problem with being able to get in and out of our residences. There's close to 1,000 affordable housing. So you're talking about impacts to affordable housing? 1,000 affordable housing. And the city approved the closure of Hillside Lane at the corner of Stewart Laguna. So we have currently only one ingress and egress. And that could be remedied by the city, but it has not been remedied by the city. So if you're going to choose to approve more developments down Oceanside Boulevard, then the city really needs to consider the needs of that affordable housing community. And I'm addressing this mainly at my council member, Ryan Keim. We have tried several times to have interactions with him as constituents. So that's something that I think needs to be considered, not just the Fire Mountain residents, but residents in general along that Oceanside Boulevard corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engel.
Hi, my name is Beth Signer, and I live on Downs Street. Neighbors, I fear there is nothing we can say or do to keep this project from being built. That said, one of the state's objectives, besides affordable housing, is to encourage the use of public transport. In that light, the residents of Ocean Creek should not need cars. Can the city work with the rental agents to incentivize carless people to inhabit the project? That would help solve the traffic issues and guarantee that the Sprinter doesn't remain empty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Janz. I live in Fire Mountain, about three blocks away from the project. I've lived there since 1985. I think the biggest concerns you've heard, obviously, tonight have been about the traffic impacting the neighborhood. And you've heard from a couple of speakers, some of the smartest ways of compromising this is to make either close off the access on Crouch or make it a entrance-only but no exit, because that corner of Crouch where it hits Oceanside Boulevard and Skylark are the biggest problem. And that's it. So I urge you just to consider that, make a compromise. You know, everybody's got to compromise. I mean, we could tell, say, make it less apartments, you know, make, or condos, make it smaller. But everybody's got to compromise a little bit, and this will help the neighborhood and help preserve the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Paul Engel. I live in Oceanside, not in Fire Mountain, but I live on Oceanside Boulevard. We all need development, we need housing. There's no question about that. The biggest thing is to make the housing work and fit for the entire community. And I keep hearing affordable housing, affordable housing? Well, what's the rent on this affordable housing? Can people afford it? Is, you know, what I consider affordable and what other people consider affordable, or the people that work here in Oceanside, may not be able to find it to be affordable. And, you know, transit corridors are great, but we got to make the transit system work for these corridors. Because I'm here to tell you, if you have 300 units, you're going to end up with way more than 300 cars, because people, the transit system doesn't work for people to go where they need to go. How do I know? Because I want to go into San Diego and take the transit, and it quits running at 8:00. So guess what? I'm driving there and back. But the real question on affordability is, what is going to be affordable housing? And 30 units that is designated affordable? Man, that's not enough. That's not even 10%. But it is what it's going to be. I'm just saying, can we take a good look at it and make sure we make it work for everyone in Oceanside? Because once it's done, we're stuck with the problem for forever. And we've all seen what's happened downtown, how congested it's gotten. So I'm just saying, let's make sure that we make the right decisions and make it fit and work the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
That gentleman was quite accurate what he said.
Your name, sir?
My name is Ed Simpson. I live up on Fire Mountain. The project won't impact me directly, because I'm kind of above all the cut-through traffic. But Downs, Downs Road is a, is a, is a mess. It's a freeway at times. I just ask everyone in the city council I just asked everyone in City Council just to go out on Oceanside Boulevard, somewhere out there around the Crouch Street intersection, around 3:00 in the afternoon, and see that, realize that something's got to be done to mitigate those traffic problems. I mean, that's a great spot for, and close to public transit, all the good things are there as well with this project, but that traffic out there is going to be a nightmare, and I just don't see how it's ever going to get any better without mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ron Seba. I'm a resident of Fire Mountain, District 3. I've been for 20 years. I have a lot of empirical experience on watching cars slide through stop signs, go fast, and other things that they shouldn't do there. My first career was in law enforcement, and maybe that makes me more cognizant of it. But invariably, as the gentleman for JPI said, they're going to discourage cutting through Fire Mountain by completing the gap on South Oceanside Boulevard to allow another access to Oceanside Boulevard itself. But that doesn't deter them from cutting up through Fire Mountain, which invariably they will. It's the shortest distance, but the residential streets are not set up for constant traffic. I dispute the study that says Downs will only be 5%, 15%, whatever the figure is, because to do a valid study, you need historical data, and there's none, because the facilities haven't been built. So to question why no empirical, my empirical is me seeing this knowledge, this experience firsthand, I can give you that. Other things that I've heard, the JPI, maybe Mr. Morrison said on the 10th of October at a meeting, there's going to be a traffic problem there. The traffic problem is something that Oceanside could resolve. Fire Mountain residents like myself are concerned about them coming up there regularly, and they will. And it's not just the occupants of the apartment, it's going to be visitors, it's going to be the retail outlet, that's going to be serviced. One thing they said, I'm referring to JPI, is that they won't drive as much. Well, if they're not driving as much, then he's assuming they're going to drive somewhat. They're going to steal, and they're going to take public access. The Sprinter, as good as it is for some things.
Thank you, sir.
Definition of public access, but it's a one destination from point A, Crouch, to point B, UCSSM.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. My name is Santi Kumchum. I'm a JPI team member and not an Oceanside resident, but I am here speaking on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Southern California as a governing board member and past chapter president and advocate for housing. My voice is one, but I represent approximately 1,000 member companies and 100,000 Southern California residents. Let's be clear, we are in a housing affordability crisis because of decisions made throughout the state by elected officials not unlike yourselves. We have not approved enough housing to support our population and household formation. It's a lack of housing, it's that simple. But projects like this, one, are the only way we're going to make a meaningful impact to the housing crisis. I urge you to approve the Ocean Creek project and support transit-oriented housing. Thank you for your time, for your consideration, and most importantly, for your service to your community.
Good evening, buenas noches, Mayor Sanchez and the council. My name is Beatrice Palmer. My pronouns are she, hers, and ella. I do live in Oceanside, I was raised here. And it takes a lot of courage for folks to come up here and talk about their truths. It takes a lot of courage to encourage your employees and people that don't even represent Oceanside to come and advocate for yourself, for your organization. But it takes even more courage for the construction workers, the union that came here, the gentleman that talked about not being paid livable wages to be able to live in the same buildings that you're building, or to be able to pay for the needs, the basic needs of their family. So as you grapple with this decision, I hope that you remember that, yes, we need housing, but we also need affordable housing for those that are on the verge of becoming homeless. And also, we need to hire those companies that are treating their employee with dignity and paying them livable wages. So thank you so much for the work and the decision you're about to make.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Walshaw, I'm the CEO of Mobile Home Advisory Committee, representing mobile home parks throughout this county. With regard to Cavaliers ingress and egress, just because it impacts the traffic in this area, I wanted to say that we've been assisting Cavalier, and their HOA President Bob Lannan is on my board. And one of the things that happened when the park owner removed the rear gate, at first there's been two fires since then, and that gate access is closed, except now there's a, you know, the fire and police have access. But in an emergency, the front entrance to that park is impeded by the train. Every 15 minutes, the train crosses that front access. There's only one way in and one way out. And when there was a traffic accident on the Five freeway, just above the off-ramp that's adjacent to that, the Highway Patrol funneled all the traffic from that accident into the park, thinking that they could get out the back gate. And there were tractor-trailer rigs and everything going around for hours, and they couldn't get out, and people couldn't get out of their driveways. So there has to be a solution to that. And it also makes them out of compliance with their evacuation plan, and the city's supposed to approve that plan every year annually per HCD in order for them to have a permit to operate. And I don't think that they have a current one or that that plan is meeting that requirements, because I don't think it's been updated since then. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to get started?
Yes. I'm Jim Mellon. I live on, I live on Down Street. Down Street was my driveway before they punched it through. The traffic is terrible. It's been terrible. I think you should send the contractors back to the drawing boards. When Fire Mountain is upgraded so we can have control of the traffic, then we can start building those 25, or 295 homes. It's going to happen, but let's fix the streets first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? I see, are you rising to speak? Okay.
My name's Penny Russell, and I'm a, I live here in Oceanside. I just have one question that I'm hoping someone can answer tonight, and that is, what is the, what is the anticipated pricing of these units on the fair market value, the studios? And I believe it goes up to, is it a two-bedroom or three-bedroom? And I just would like to know how much they're anticipating that rent to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. All right, I'm going to go, no one else is rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go back to the appellant, who has, I believe, six?
Six minutes, eight seconds.
Six minutes, eight seconds for rebuttal.
First of all, I just wanted to make a few comments. JPI was not forthright in their traffic studies. They started during COVID and finished in COVID, because it was 2021. They did the wrong times for peak hours, and they should have asked the residents what the three major traffic times are in our area. Their computer analysis did not include cut-through traffic, which is tremendous. The studies from the city that went from an A to JPI's B, it's kind of like the old statistics that I learned, garbage in, garbage out. Morrison said, Mr. Morrison said that we still have, he's answered all our questions. We have a lot of unanswered questions that we've sent, and they've still been not answered. And Mr. Morrison never contacted me, so I don't know where that came from, because I would have responded. I want to reiterate that we do not want access to or from Crouch Street, and that's, oh, that's what I've put on here, no access from Crouch Street into the proposed Ocean Creek project. There's an offset between Skylark and the South Oceanside Boulevards. That is going to be a major mess. There's also two traffic signals. One is at the intersection of Oceanside Boulevard and Crouch Street. Then there's also an unsignalized intersection with a stop sign at Skylark and Crouch. We also do not want any parking on Skylark or Crouch from the residents of Ocean Creek, because that's going to create more traffic issues. I did put in my amended conclusions, look at number six, and it talks about changing Downs and Ivy from a collector to a residential road, which will stop the cut-through. There's a, there's a concept that I came across in all of my studies, it's called Bray's Paradox. And if you remove a route, it can improve the traffic based on multiple actual studies in Sewell, Boston, et cetera. So what happens is drivers look for the fastest route, they combine their errands, and then they start taking public transportation. So it's a win-win. As I said earlier, Oceanside Boulevard is not going to be widened. We don't have the ability to widen it to six lanes, and that's from the traffic department. We're not opposed to the low-income, high-density, just this location. It's very dangerous, and it's not safe, and it's not healthy. And we're all about the kids. So bottom line, I disagree with the position of this is fully approvable as is, and I stand by my presentation. This is all about health and safety impacts on our existing community, as I've laid out. I thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question? Did you, I'm sorry, let me ask you a question. Did you say no parking on Skylark, so you want that red striped?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the only street that you wanted red striped?
Crouch.
And Crouch.
Yes. That whole intersection needs to be kind of fixed, you know, I mean, maybe Governor Newsom can do it.
I just wanted to ask you that question as clarification.
Sure.
Anybody else want to ask clarification on her, on her, okay. So that is, we are done with that part. We are now back to the council.
Thank you for your time.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Just a quick question for staff about the traffic, and I have talked to the residents, and I understand their concerns with traffic on Crouch. What would that look like if we did stop South Oceanside Boulevard before it did connect to Crouch? So you'd still have ingress and egress off State Street, and then down through the shopping center at Smart and Final, correct? And what would that look like, and is that, is that possible? And what would the process for that be like to make a change in the development at this point?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Russ?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, the Deputy Mayor has asked how we might implement, how we might close access to Crouch from South Oceanside Boulevard. And I would defer to our traffic experts on that.
And as Honorable Mayor and Council, as our traffic engineers coming up, there's actually different alternatives that could be explored. One would be, of course, restricting it to entrance only, so that people could not punch out in that direction. The other option would be to look at installing a median on Crouch, which would prevent people from making that left turnout. And then, of course, redirecting all the traffic flow south on South Oceanside Boulevard and not allowing any access. One thing that we do need to be mindful of, though, in this discussion is, as you all know, that that accessway does serve the Sprinter station right now, so we would need to be mindful of that, which is maybe one of the reasons why a one-way in and out going westbound might make the most sense, because people would still be able to access the Sprinter station, but then they would have to continue out going westbound on South Oceanside Boulevard. But I'll let Mr. Hameen explain what that might look like.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Hamid Bahaduri, Public Works Director, SR City Manager, explained that very well. We obviously do not encourage not finishing this gap, not building the gap, but the issues in Fire Mountain are a bit different from the project traffic. The issues in Fire Mountain, we are aware of that. We are working, and most folks here know that we have already been circulating petitions for speed humps. We will be installing about March, April timeframe, about 27 speed humps. It will definitely help deter some traffic, at least slow down traffic. Not building the South Oceanside Boulevard, as the traffic studies suggest, only about 10% to 15% of the Ocean Creek project traffic goes easterly anyways. So it's not going to be detrimental to the project, traffic-wise at least, I should say. And as Mr. Cunningham said in his presentation, in the peak hour, we expect about maybe 20, 25 cars from the Ocean Creek traffic to be going easterly and then southerly in the mountain view. If that gap is not built, that 20, 25 will have to go westerly, and we'll have to use state tree and commerce to get on the Oceanside Boulevard and get on I-5.
I know one of the concerns I heard was just the dynamics of the offset intersections. So when you have someone coming out and making a left or a right, and you already have traffic backed up on Crouch, that challenge, so if we had it just coming in, it would eliminate that when you're trying to make a left and go across both lanes and really getting congested. Would that, do you think that would eliminate some of those issues if it was just an in coming in Crouch?
Yeah, those, the offset intersection of Skylark and South Oceanside Boulevard and Crouch, I was looking at actually this afternoon, the problem occurs during the school closing time mostly, because the people do that loop, and they go back up and down, and then they go westerly on Skylark. And the traffic pretty much backs up, but I would like, I refer to those kind of situations, I call it organized chaos. People kind of work, they work their way around. There's heavy traffic in that time, which is about 1:00, 1:30, and also again in 3:00, which is not the commute peak that the Ocean Creek project will generate. But there's heavy traffic going northbound on Crouch, and there's heavy traffic coming from Skylark, making a right turn. That intersection is not controlled, and we have the crossing for the railroad, and then we have the signal at Oceanside. So it's a confluence of several issues. Still, people go through that, and if you do a theoretical calculation for the capacity and level of service at Crouch and Skylark, that, as shown in the traffic study, is level of service B, because it's an uncontrolled intersection. And we can look at improvements at that location. But again, you know, I don't think that it serves the city, the project, or even the residents, not to build Oceanside, South Oceanside, to build that gap, but we can work with scenarios that, like City Managers suggested, looking at turn restrictions, or at least a specific period of the day, turn restrictions. There are ways that we can do to better manage traffic and discourage traffic going south to, through Fire Mountain.
Okay. And that's for me, a project like this, I guess the intent, you know, what the California legislature is to put on corridors, and that's where you want the traffic, is to go on Oceanside Boulevard and then to the freeway, and not to cut through neighborhoods like Fire Mountain. So anything that we can encourage that behavior, I think we need to do. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Okay, Councilmember Robinson?
I think the issue of traffic cut-through already exists, the problem's already there. In this day and age of ways and Google Maps, everybody is getting directions to the shortest route, although maybe not the most timely. But that said, and Mr. Cunningham, I don't know if you said it, parking, I know that came up, about parking availability on-site, how many parking spaces? Is it more than what, that it would be required by a density request?
Councilman Robinson, yes. In invoking density bonus, the project is then subject to standards established by the state of California for density bonus projects, and that varies by bedroom count. But yes, this project complies with those requirements.
So I guess the concern is, is that there won't be enough parking, and people are going to want to park out on Crouch or other streets. Is that something that's anticipated? And I don't know if you can answer that.
No, that's not anticipated. The, the parking availability would be roughly one and a half spaces per unit.
And then guest parking also, and parking also for the commercial?
Yes. There are 10 spaces for the commercial component.
Just a question on build-out time. From approval to occupancy, how much time would it take for this project to get built before people start occupying it?
You know, that's probably a question best answered by the applicant.
Okay. Can you answer that question, sir? When do you expect people to be in the units?
We're hoping for 2025, 2026 at this point.
Come to the microphone and also state your name for the record.
Good evening, William Morrison, applicant. We would expect 2025, 2026 for the, as we, for the first residents in the units.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask that is... And the reason I ask that is, to me, it's obvious that there's already issues going on now, regardless of what we build there, if anything ever gets built there. And I don't know, you know, how much do we put on a builder? How far does he have to reach out and fix things? I mean, they're going to put sidewalks and stuff, but obviously, not all the problems are there on Crouch. And so I guess this is for Mr. Borrego. In that two to three years now that we have before anything, have we heard enough that the city can look at some of those traffic issues? I know the traffic calming devices are going in, but can we look at things that are, obviously, it's a problem to these folks now with the traffic, the parking of, do we need more enforcement? I don't, I don't know what the solutions are. I'm just kind of, we have time to work on these things before the project's built.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, yes, that is correct. And as Mr. Bahaduri stated earlier, Fire Mountain was actually selected as one of our first neighborhoods to implement our new traffic calming program. So we are doing things out in that area now. I also know that we have the ability to also take a look at some of the vehicle weight limits in that street network up there as well, just to make sure that, you know, we are doing what we can to control the number of large vehicles that are up there. And I know that that is something that our traffic engineering staff is willing to take a look at as well. You know, as was stated earlier, certainly the geometrics of that intersection, or that confluence of intersections is problematic. We can certainly take a look at that and see if there is anything that can be done out there. You know, I do think that, you know, based on what I've heard, and based on some of the suggestions that might be available, you know, we can certainly take a look at something within that window to see if we can't improve the situation out there.
Right. Because I don't think it's fair to say that all the speeders, or we even heard from one resident, said they made a U-turn in the middle because they got tired of waiting for the traffic. And it's not all outside people that are speeding and doing the thing. So I think, too, anything we can do to start slowing people down, and that will hopefully redirect some of the pass-through traffic around, because they'll, they'll be able to move faster by going to the 5 and to the 78, those kind of things. So, and, and just one thing, because I don't want to let the, our carpenters, the individuals that came to speak, what is the city's responsibility, if any, for, as developers go and ensure that they're following the laws and things like that? Do we have any responsibility in that? I don't know if that's a legal question, or a...
With respect to the issue tonight, your, your decision is framed by the issues on appeal. And so that is not an issue on appeal, as are most of the issues raised in the carpenter's letter that you received when we went into closed session today. That's the first time I saw it, as when we came out, almost all of the issues raised in that letter were not issues that were raised in the appeal. With respect to labor code compliance, we do that for public projects. So we ensure our contractors are paying prevailing wage, and all the documentation is established. This is a private project, I don't believe we are involved in the enforcement of that.
Okay. And that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robinson, if I could, I'll mention, in that vein, that parking is not a point of appeal either, but I appreciate the question, and I wanted to give you a little bit more information. So under density bonus, this project would require 374 parking spaces, 374. It supplies 467 spaces.
Thank you. That answers that. And really, I'm just asking, because I'm happy that my decision on this tonight has nothing to do with the letter from the state or some threat, because we don't do something. So it's, it's based on the appeal and, and the facts at hand. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce?
So, I apologize in advance, it was kind of a broad range of questions. First, I am concerned about hearing the worker abuse allegations, and those are extremely concerning. Do we have a reporting system for contractors that are operating in the city, where we can know if there are current allegations against any contractors? Or is that still only for public projects? Or do we even have that for public projects?
We require, our public works contracts with private, with contractors, require a multitude of requirements for reporting labor code compliance. You're asking about purely private projects, where there's no subsidies involved? I don't believe we, we do oversight over those.
Yeah, this is a density bonus project, that they did ask for one of our concessions, right? So technically, we, we are contributing in some way under the parking. So I would just ask that we consider a reporting system, so that we know if we are having contractors in our city that are not treating our workers best. If there's any way that we can do that, I'd like to explore that as a council. There are, there are lots of positives to this project. I understand the very real concerns, as somebody who has picked up his children on California from daycare, and has been stuck in that traffic, and been tempted to do the U-turn. It's, it's real. And the concerns that you've brought forward with traffic are serious, and ones that should be addressed, and I think require a thoughtful approach, and it's, it's beyond this project itself, as we've talked about it. It doesn't bear on the decision tonight. I appreciate that there is some habitat preservation done on two properties by the developer. I appreciate, I actually think the South Oceanside to Crouch connection is a good idea, but the left-hand turn coming onto Crouch does sound like a nightmare. I think in some way that will need to be addressed. The speed coming down the hill, combined with the folks that are, that are merging on from Skylark, it really would be, I mean, I can think of that as really a nightmare to try and even take that left-hand turn safely, even during the non-peak school release times. The housing does include 30 units of affordable housing. For me, this is, this is a moment where I'm coming in at kind of the end of this process. I think we need a lot more out of developments like this, that are transit-oriented, that are perfectly positioned for people, as we improve, we have to improve our transit for this to work. But as we do improve the transit, this would be a perfect opportunity for us to be including more affordable housing. I'm hoping that we, as a council, can take that up, and instead of the 10%, we start looking at 15%. We're missing out on an extra 5% of housing that we desperately need. And I'm talking about, as I heard tonight, my children wanting to live here, and me, as a renter, wanting to live here. The Boulevard vision, this, this could be a catalyst in the Boulevard vision, for what it's worth. There is no doubt that, that Boulevard is a space that, that can be improved to, to the great future of our city, and Boulevard is ripe with opportunity. It is my hope that something like this kind of project will spur a Boulevard renaissance, so to speak. And then when it comes to traffic, is there any chance, do roundabouts make sense at all in that space? Or is it too much traffic, or is it too much speed?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Joyce, roundabout, at that location, if you're referring to Skylark, South Oceanside, and Crouch, that offset intersection, that is right next to the railroad track. We will not be able to design a roundabout at that location.
Thank you. The other, the other big concern that I would, I think we're desperate to make sure is addressed, is that there are children that walk up that hill, that will be crossing over that exit onto Crouch. They walk their everyday to middle school right now, up a tragically poor sidewalk, which I am really grateful that the developer will be improving to the safety of those students. That crosswalk will need to be properly painted, properly protected for their crossings, as it is not right now. So if we're looking at two years from now, I think that's something that should be immediately addressed, to the safety of those students. That's all for now.
Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments, and kind of similar to Councilman Robinson here, the problem exists up there now, and personally, I'm not sure that this project would exacerbate the problem much more. However, I do recognize that, and I'm willing to look at having a right-in off of Crouch Street, but no left-out at all. So it would actually be, just be like a one, from the project driveway to Crouch Street, be one-way westbound only. And that'll also cut down on the travel path that people have to cross that street. So, and honestly, if there's a parking issue, I think they're going to park in the NCTD Sprinter lot, they're not going to park on Skylark. So I will move to approve the project, with the condition added, to limit Crouch Street from, I mean, to limit Oceanside Boulevard south, from Crouch Street to the project driveway, to one-way westbound only, if that's included in my motion.
I'll second that. All right, no other lights. This project is, is probably maybe 20 years, 30 years ahead of its time here in Oceanside. We have very poor public transportation in Oceanside. It's, it's difficult to get from Oceanside to anywhere, because we only have a Sprinter that goes, really, to, to Palomar and San Marcos, Cal State San Marcos. There are no other destinations. We have been promised connectors for over 20 years now, to Tri-City Hospital, to the courthouse, to the mall, to other places where if this was happening, we actually could use the Sprinter at a much higher rate, and in fact, get more ridership on it. But as we, as it is now, traffic is a problem. For Oceanside, over 60% of our workforce travels outside of Oceanside, an average of 20 miles, driving, because of the lack of public transportation that we have. I use Crouch Street to get to Oceanside Boulevard from Canyon. You used to be able to make a left on Canyon. I've been doing that since I was 18, well, 16, really, 16. And then recently, within this past year, year and a half, no more left turns, deemed too dangerous. Why? So I've, I've been using, I've been having to go to Crouch Street, to the, to the light, and I have to sit there several lights, to be able to make a left onto Oceanside Boulevard, to be able to travel east. I get to watch all the traffic that is on, you know, at this intersection. So it is, there is a lot of traffic. There's also a lot of cross-traffic. I've seen people go from, you know, cut through Fire Mountain to get to the, the other side, to 78, and to the shopping mall. Not just talking about cross-traffic to get to Oceanside Boulevard. It's very, very difficult. And I've, I've heard, what I've heard are several creative and helpful suggestions on how this, this project could be improved. The state has basically sent us a letter saying, you know, "We're watching you, and these are our requirements." And I think several of you indicated, yes, I know what the state laws are. And I do not agree with the state taking away our local control. By the way, in the last 20 years, Oceanside has become less and less affordable. This was the most affordable city, coastal city, in the whole San Diego County, and we are running out of housing, but it's becoming commercialized. We are losing, we are losing units in our housing stock. And even in Eastside and Crown Heights, they are being, they're vacation rentals. So this is, this housing is more higher-end housing. We are losing affordable housing. We are absolutely losing our workforce housing, period. This project comes close to what I'd like to see, but I heard a lot of these suggestions, and they are very practical. And the standard is, for approval, despite a lot of, a lot of problems like traffic, is that they can't be mitigated. And I believe that they can be mitigated. In fact, I would propose that we postpone this project, so that we can really get to agreement on what those mitigation measures are. I hear, I'm hearing for the first time that we have maybe 27 speed humps that are going to be coming into Fire Mountain. I'm, I'm really happy about that, because that's what I wrote. We need to do traffic calming. We, we need to do speed humps. Where else can we do to, to lessen the amount of cross-traffic? Roundabouts and speed humps. But we have to put that in writing. We have to, we, you know, I mean, I'm hearing that they're coming, but I, I haven't heard that they are actually going to happen. Okay, I guess I heard March, April, but I'd like that to be a real thing that happens. I'd like to see that as part of the whole project here for Fire Mountain. So that is what I would propose, is that we postpone this, that we, you know, there were a lot of suggestions, I was trying to write them down, including close Crouch to Oceanside Boulevard, I, you know, and red striping some of these streets, so that we could, because Crouch is where the kids walk to school and from school. We need more, you know, we need, we need improved school, schoolchildren pedestrian improvements, including yellow flashing lights. There are, there's, that is a very, very busy, busy intersection for pedestrians, pedestrians, where this is supposed to be a walkable part of the city. And I, you know, and, and there's a lot of places locally that you can walk to, and some kids have to, have to walk, because there's no more busing, to, to Palmquist and to Lincoln. So I would like to see a total package here. I'm not saying that there is not a project. I, you know, I got that letter from the state, I read it a couple of times, pretty angry, right? Because, you know, it's, basically takes away our local control, especially for a city that rarely, rarely says no to a project. Especially for a city that really, really does care about providing affordable housing. So that, that would be my suggestion, that we postpone this, that we really, truly take this into like, say, a, a meeting where we can have interaction with, with, with the residents, and try to come up with every single thing that we can to make this, you know, come to an agreement. Because I know, I know you wanted us to vote no, and, and you already heard that we can't say no, right? We do need the units, but we, but we can mitigate. This is not something that cannot be mitigated. We can mitigate. I'm hearing from the rest of the council here, my, my colleagues here, that they, that they also agree, oh, you know, yes. So, and it's like, okay, well, this, this is not going to happen for another two years, but why don't we have that agreement upfront? So we know that in two years, it's really going to happen. I can't tell you how many times something has said to me that something's going to happen, and it doesn't happen. And then I end up getting a lot of angry letters, emails from folks, right? Because, because it wasn't, wasn't in writing. So that would be my suggestion, that we, you know, not say no, but postpone. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your holistic look at this, but I don't believe it's this developer's job to fix every problem in Fire Mountain. And if you're concerned about the sidewalks and the kids walking up Crouch, that's what they are going to address, and the faster that we move forward on the project, and the faster that problem will be fixed. And then that was my point with the city manager, is now we have time to look at all the other areas. So I, I think we have a motion and a second.
Right. And Councilmember Robinson, I didn't, I wasn't putting this all on the developer, it's also on the city. I mean, it is our responsibility to make our streets safe. Deputy Mayor Keim?
Question for the city attorney. Can we legally postpone this tonight?
The zoning ordinance requires you to approve at the conclusion of the public hearing and after deliberation to either approve, disapprove, or modify the project. So you would have to make a decision on the project.
So what the mayor just said can't happen?
I don't think you can indefinitely postpone it.
No, I wouldn't want to indefinitely postpone it. It would be modifying via workshop, and we could...
We're trying to modify right now. I have my time, Mayor. May I please speak?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight, from what I've heard, so... So tonight, from what I've heard, so we are addressing the four points of appeal, and I just, we have to operate legally, we have to operate within the law. So the four points of appeal that we have, Mayor, what are your specific findings that we are denying this project tonight?
I would ask that this come back, that this come back to the council with everything that.
We can't do that.
Yes, yes, they can.
The city attorney just said we can't do that.
Come back in a month.
They don't need support.
Very specific time, so that there can be a meeting with the residents, come back with the list of things, and then we can modify it and approve it.
City Attorney, can we just leave the meeting tonight and come back in a month and modify this?
I think you have the discretion to continue to a date certain, but I would encourage you to, the code anticipates that you're going to make a decision on a project really within 30 days after an appeal. That's what's required. We have to schedule a public hearing within 30 days of the planning commission decision. And so I'm not sure what would be accomplished in a month if we'd had new proposed conditions or what specifically staff would be requested to do in that time period.
Meet with the residents, come up with a list, including things that I heard about red striping on Crouch, prohibit trucks.
We can do that tonight, Mayor. We can red stripe on Crouch. We can ask that. We can also ask for the one-way end Oceanside Boulevard. That's what we're doing here tonight, and it's what we're going to do in a month. We don't have, and I'm, I want to know, these four points, do you have a reason that we can say no to the project tonight in those four points of appeal?
I'm not saying no to the project, sir. I'm not saying no to the project. I said that right out loud and upfront.
So what do you want to change to the project? The red stripes or the red curbs?
No access to Crouch, prohibit trucks.
We just did, we did that. We added no access to Crouch. It's in. Here's a position.
Have all of the.
The position we're in for the state.
Include all of the, the traffic calming and also the pedestrian crossings for schoolchildren, including yellow lights.
In a month?
This is something that I want to partner with the city to do.
Okay. Mr. Brago?
Exactly. That'd be conditioned on traffic calming.
Mr. Brago, do we, from what I heard from the public works director, we are already in the process of, our first project for a traffic calming is going to be the speed bumps in Fire Mountain, correct?
Yes, that is correct. There is a project that is actually in the works, and that project is going to happen. One thing I want to.
Is that Downs and Ivy?
It's throughout Fire Mountain. There's a number of streets that are being looked at as part of our inaugural traffic calming project. One thing I want to make sure that's important to acknowledge, though, is that on a technical level, the project does not generate the need for mitigation measures. So I just want to make sure that we're careful about that because we're kind of talking about mitigation measures here about the project, and it doesn't trigger those thresholds. So I just want to make sure, that's a very important point in my mind, because unless the applicant is, you know, completely agreeable to do this, then, you know, essentially we're forcing mitigation on a project that isn't technically required.
Understood. And that, going forward, the red curb and things like that would be fairly low cost that the city could look into or do on our own, correct?
They would. And, you know, to a point that was made by another council member, I don't necessarily think it's fair to burden this developer with all the improvements that need to be made in that area. Certainly, I think that the motion that's on the table right now, which essentially would require the project to limit inbound traffic off of Crouch to westbound traffic is certainly doable, and that's easily, I think, an easy solution to a lot of the issues that have been raised, which is to discourage traffic from exiting on Crouch, which presumably could incentivize cut-through traffic.
Can I be heard on that issue? So as I reviewed this material after you made your motion, it's clear that that option, though, was not studied in the traffic study or any of the sequel analysis. And so my advice would be to proceed with your motion, to direct staff to amend the traffic study and to bring that back to you very quickly. I'm confident we could get that done within a matter of 60 days or so, so that you can approve that requirement for this project, so that we could amend the entrance. But my advice, since it was not studied, and there have been litigation threats made by folks, many of whom who attended today, who are very litigious, not the residents here, but the union, they're very active in litigation, and to move forward with a project amendment that hasn't been studied, I think it would be more prudent to move forward with your motion to affirm, direct staff to analyze that modification and bring that back to you as soon as possible, so that we could implement it.
And I'll finish my comments and let Councilmember Weiss address the motion. These projects that come to us, especially with a lack of discretion we have from the state, it's not about whether I like the project or I don't like it. It's what can we do to make it so it doesn't have a quality-of-life impact? What's the most we can do to make sure it doesn't affect our residents negatively? And that's what I look at in each of these projects, and it's a challenge. And sometimes we do better than others, but I think we're doing our due diligence with this in the position we're in. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce.
Are there safety concerns about reducing the exits from the property from two to
Honorable Mayor and council members, that's probably a question that would be best suited for the project's traffic engineer, who probably has the most detailed knowledge in terms of how vital an exit at that location is.
Councilmember, that is something that we could study as part of the analysis that you could direct us to perform.
Okay. Well, I would definitely want that to be included.
So you're saying direct staff to analyze certain things and come back within 60 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, and if it can't be done, I would certainly notify you. But my expectation is that this is a fairly simple modification. It's just one that hasn't been studied. So eliminating.
But not just that, but other things that have been.
Well, that wasn't, what was part of the motion.
Okay, what was that?
What was part of the motion was just to modify it to make it one-way in on Crouch, correct? So there wouldn't be an exit at Crouch.
I thought you were also talking about an analysis to direct staff to come back on things that the city can do. Wasn't that part of your?
I think Mr. Brago mentioned things that the city could do. My advice with respect to the modification of the traffic study was to address the motion that was made and seconded.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Next item. Thank you very much for coming. And I believe that there will be more modifications with respect to traffic safety. Next item is item number 11, which is introduction of an ordinance amending Article 10, 10C, and 31 of the zoning ordinance to remove texts related to projects exceeding base density from certain sections of the city's zoning ordinance and adoption of a resolution establishing the amended text of Articles 10C and 31 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 14C of the city's municipal code as part of the implementing documents of the local coastal program. I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request council members state disclose constituent contacts and correspondence.
On this specific item, staff only.
I'm sorry, staff only.
Staff only.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We did not receive any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. We are beginning with a report from Shannon Vitale, senior planner. Ms. Vitale?
Hi, good evening, Ms. Sanchez, City Council. I'm Shannon Vitale, senior planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item 11, a zone amendment and local coastal program amendment to revise provisions of the zoning ordinance related to projects exceeding base density. Staff is recommending the city council introduce an ordinance amending Articles 10, 10C, and 31 of the zoning ordinance and adopt a resolution to establish the tech changes to Articles 10C and 31 and Chapter 14C of the municipal code as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. In 2020, city council directed staff to conduct a comprehensive review of Chapter 14C and prepare amendments that would encourage the provision of affordable housing on-site. During this process, staff determined that certain texts within the zoning ordinance pertaining to projects.
Excuse me, so, excuse.
I can continue.
Okay, go ahead.
Certain projects that were exceeding base density is no longer applicable due to California state density bonus law, which provides incentives, including additional building height and reduced parking requirements, to projects that construct affordable units on-site. The proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance are included as Exhibit A and Attachment 1 to the staff report. On November 21st, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendments, and on December 7th, the city council approved the amendments to Chapter 14C of the municipal The zone amendment before you tonight is simply a follow-up item to clean up the zoning ordinance, to remove certain provisions that are no longer applicable. The local coastal program amendment is to establish that amended text to both the zoning ordinance and the municipal code as part of the local coastal program. As stated earlier, the city council has already approved the amendments to Chapter 14C on December 7th. There are no further revisions to that article. Article 10 is only applicable to the inland zone properties and is therefore not included as part of this local coastal program amendment. In conclusion, staff is recommending the city council approve ZA 224 and LCPA 223 by introducing an ordinance to amend Articles 10, 10C, and 31 and adopting a resolution to establish the adopted text of Articles 10C and 31 and Chapter 14C of the local coastal program. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any, excuse me, this is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to speak on this item. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we have six speakers on this item.
Six?
Six.
Okay.
And again, just like with the previous item, we'll call everybody's name and your name will be up there. And we do have two microphones, so please make your way down to the next available microphone. Our first speaker is Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Wendy Bravo Dolan.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. There was a lot of references to 10, 10C, 31, 14C, but there was no explanation basically of what we're talking about. You know, I sat back there and tried to figure out what was being talked about. There was something about parking, there was something about, you know, land use or something and density and stuff, but there was nothing there to chew on. You know, I normally can sit back and understand some stuff, but for me, I'm sitting there just as confused as I was before. And I wish that it was a little bit more clear than what it was presented. Because, you know, I was anticipating maybe a little bit more information about parking, whether this is going to be reducing parking. We already have a lot of problems with parking in the city and base density. We already have problems with that. You know, we're going to have to take and study that a little bit more clearly. And even if the state may disagree with some of our results, we can at least go on record saying to the state, you know, these are our results, saying, you know, this is reality. You may have dreams, but this is reality. And they need to be told what reality is here in Oceanside. You know, we can sit back and play their game if we want to, but that's the point that we have to at least show them what reality is. Because if we don't, they'll be sitting up there in Sacramento playing their game, and with nobody telling them what reality is, they're going to play their game. And this is something that we, as a municipality, need to do, is stand up for our citizens and bring forth facts. And starting with, you know, what, be a little bit clearer in communicating with the public on what's being talked about and being less confused with the public on what is being presented. Otherwise, it's just double speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Wendy, Ms. Bravo?
This is, you know, it really disturbs me to see this justification for these kinds of plop projects that are not properly researched, nor properly engineered, nor properly drafted, nor properly conceived. You know, you see a town, you know, really arranging to change the municipality in such a way that the infrastructure is so badly bogged down with the kind of thing that we were just hearing, you know, sitting in the peanut gallery here, where you have, you know, apparent legal counsel almost taking a mayoral role in the directing of, you know, what can and can't be done by way of, you know, pulling back enough to plan properly. And it's an embarrassment. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
He may have signed up for the wrong.
Mr. Bill Jans?
I think he left.
Okay, Renata Engel?
I was speaking on the previous.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other requests?
Paul Engel. Thank you. That concludes our speakers.
Great, thank you. Back to the council, is there a motion? Oh, excuse me. Yeah, this, okay, I got to close. It's part of the public hearing. Forget, forget that it's a public hearing. All right, to the council. There's a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Title the ordinance?
This is the introduction of an ordinance to the city council, the city of Oceanside, amending Articles 10, 10C, 31, I'm sorry, and 31 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance to delete certain provisions related to projects exceeding base density.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 12 is confirmation of issuance of a Class 1 existing facilities categorical exemption per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and adoption of a resolution approving conditional use permit and a waiver of locational requirements to allow a cannabis distribution facility within an existing building located at 1629 Ordway. I'm going to go ahead and open up this, open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and public.
Staff and public.
Staff and public.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
All the correspondence we received has been forwarded to council prior to the meeting, including communication from Mayor Kilari.
Okay, thank you. We have testimony by Dane Thompson from the Planning Department.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. My name is Dane Thompson with the Planning Division. I will be presenting item number 12 tonight, the Arab Girl Cannabis Distribution Facility Conditional Use Permit. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend the city council confirm issuance of a Class 1 existing facilities exemption per SEQA and adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit and waiver of locational requirements to allow a cannabis distribution facility within an existing building located at 1629 Ordway. The project site is located off Ordway, just south of Oceanside Boulevard, as you can see on the screen. The purple properties denote industrial properties, red is commercial, yellow is residential. This is the existing building that the applicant is intending to occupy. The municipal code allows cannabis facilities in certain districts subject to the approval of a local license, a conditional use permit, and a state license. On August 18th, 2020, Arab Girl was granted a local license for distribution. On October 24th, 2022, Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend city council Tonight's vote is a request that this body. Tonight's vote is a request that this body approve the CUP for a proposed cannabis distribution facility and waiver of locational requirements. The existing building is comprised of two suites, one of which is currently occupied by an existing cannabis distributor, and the other suite is intended to be occupied by the applicant. The project has been reviewed and found to be in conformance with all relevant city codes and policies. The project is consistent with the general plan, as there are no impacts in excess of typical industrial uses regarding air emissions, odor, noise, vibration, and heat, as well as no increase in loitering and foot traffic. The project complies with the zoning ordinance in that industrial districts allow cannabis distribution uses. The project is consistent with the municipal code and all relevant cannabis facility regulation. With the conditions placed on the project, staff believes the CUP findings can be made, and the project would not be detrimental to the public health or safety. All regulated uses are prescribed certain separations from other uses, like schools, parks, playgrounds, churches, residential districts, and other regulated uses. This project is not meeting all of those required separations and is thus requesting a waiver of locational requirements. The City Council may grant a waiver if the below-listed findings are made, that the project will not be contrary to the public interest, not impair nearby property, and not encourage the development of an adult entertainment area. This slide shows the locational requirements that are not being met by the project. The project is located within 1,000 feet of a church that is located across the Oceanside Boulevard corridor. Staff has included a condition of approval on the project to restrict operation on Sundays, which is the busiest day for church services. The site is located within 1,000 feet of three residential districts. The closest district to the south is separated by the Sprinter tracks, which are fenced and do not offer any public access or crossing. The residential districts to the north are separated by the Oceanside Boulevard corridor, with the walking distance from the project site to the nearest residence by sidewalk being over 1,500 feet. The site is also within 1,000 feet to a massage establishment, which is another regulated use. That establishment is located in the shopping center to the west, for which there is no direct access from the industrial park. The site is also obviously connected to an existing cannabis operator. However, both businesses are close to the public and only have business-to-business activities. For these reasons, staff and the Planning Commission believe that the project meets all the findings shown previously, and that a waiver of locational requirements is warranted. With that, staff and the Planning Commission recommend the City Council confirm issuance of a Class 1 Existing Facilities Categorical Exemption per this California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit and a waiver of locational requirements to allow a cannabis distribution facility within an existing building located at 1629 Ordway. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well. They will have a short presentation, and we will both be available for comments, for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Did you say that the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. You get up to 20 minutes. Okay. I was going to try to discourage you taking all 20.
Considering the time, I will be brief. Okay. Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lindsay Campbell-Walker, co-founder of Herb Girl, Inc. I would like to start by thanking city staff for their assistance as we have worked together over the last three years perfecting this application through numerous submittals and revisions. We are here tonight asking for your support. I'd like to give you a little background on us. I was born and raised in Oceanside. I have lived here my whole life, and I love this community. I'm applying for this conditional use permit with my business partner and father, Mark Campbell. We are Oceanside business owners and also own several commercial and residential properties here. Campbell Certified, Inc. has been a successful part of the Oceanside business community for 31 years, and we have constructed many buildings here, most notably the Pier Side apartment buildings that initiated the revitalization of the downtown coastal area. It has been a pleasure watching our growth and development over the last 30 years, and I have always been proud to call Oceanside home. Since the beginning, I have supported California's measures to legalize cannabis, and when Oceanside authorized cannabis businesses in 2018, I began developing a business plan for a women-owned cannabis distribution facility in my hometown. After years of research, including getting a degree in business entrepreneurship and consulting with professionals in the cannabis industry, my dream to own and operate such a business began to come to fruition with the issuance of our business license in 2019. We then submitted our conditional use permit application in July of 2021. At Herb Girl, our mission is to offer safe, tested, and regulated cannabis products from a licensed and compliant source. As a women-owned business, we value having a diversified staff, including offering management positions to minority and veteran applicants. We plan to hire locally, which will provide well-paying jobs with benefits. Herb Girl's business will also support the local small business community by purchasing ancillary services and other business-to-business transactions. Herb Girl, Inc. follows policies that combine business success with an understanding of the importance of our workers, our customers, the environment, and the importance of being a good neighbor. So we welcome the community outreach requirement. As longstanding members of the Oceanside community, we deeply value Oceanside as both our workplace and home. Even though our building has been previously approved for cannabis use, we wanted to revisit this with our neighbors and fellow property owners at the Oceanside Gateway Business Park. I lost myself. Okay. We have established a good reputation and have come to know many of the tenants and owners over the last 13 years. We invited property owners as well as the tenants of those properties to an open house on May 20th, 2022. There were a total of six attendees at the open house. Most attendees were interested in the cannabis facility application process, and we enjoyed getting reacquainted with them. Overall, we were met with positive and gracious support. Another aspect of our good neighbor plan I would like to point out is the commitment we have made through our community benefit agreement to donate 1% of Herb Girl's profits to local charities. We have met with the Women's Resource Center here in Oceanside, where I volunteered when I was in high school, and they will be our first charity partner in Oceanside. To conclude, we would like to thank the council for the opportunity to continue to add value to the Oceanside business community, and we ask for your full support on this conditional use permit application for this locally owned and locally operated business. Thank you.
Thank you very— Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. This is a time for members of the public to address the council on this specific issue. You will have up to three minutes to speak on this. Do we have any requests to speak from the public that have submitted slips?
Yes, we do. We have five speakers.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Miklos Campuzano. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly. To be followed by Mark Campbell, to be followed by Calvin Street.
Distinguished members of the City Council, staff, thank you very much for preparing this great presentation and taking your time today. My name is Miklos Campuzano. I work with WECAN and CREC. We provide a lot of services to cannabis businesses in the state of California, amongst other states. I am pro-cannabis because it is the first line of defense that we have against illicit cannabis in the state of California. I feel that it is the job of the city to protect its constituents in providing legal ways and more affordable ways of finding cannabis in the state of California. And I just wanted to put my full support behind this, and I've seen the process that many cannabis people go through. It is a long process. It takes years. You know, when many cities can take up to three years, very likely what Herb Girl's gone through has been a large amount of due diligence working with the city. I think it'll benefit every constituent in not only Oceanside, but also other municipalities in San Diego County from having a local distributor that can provide product locally and not being coming from other cities like Los Angeles, Long Beach, which is technically siphoning away tax revenue from Oceanside and other cities that are local to San Diego County. I just want to provide my support. Thank everyone for their time, and thank you again for the staff report. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Mark Campbell?
I am Mark Campbell, co-owner of Herb Girl, Inc. with Lindsay Campbell. We started this business back in 2018, bringing our presentation together, doing all our business plans with Lindsay's mother, who died in 2019 in October, and we kept this project going to, in her honor. We've been working very hard at it for the last three years. I own three properties in Oceanside. I've lived here since I was, since 1991. All my kids were born here. We have a lot of investment in the city, and we want to continue to do so. And as Miklos just pointed out, this is, this is an avenue of taxation that we're missing out on in this city, that other, other cities are going far beyond what Oceanside has done. It's also a way to provide, you know, legal cannabis to people that in need. I have friends that use it for epilepsy and Tourette's and ADD and everything else. And I think, you know, as far as public good goes, it's being used for more good than it's not. Also, the, you know, the—when I first got, when we first started this plan, we Googled dispensaries in Oceanside, and there was 52 of them, and they were all mobile. So I think this is the only path to legal and taxable cannabis. And I also understand that if, if it isn't passed here, it's going to get passed in Vista, San Marcos, or, you know, anywhere else but here. So that's why we are on the path, and that's why we are very, very honored and very, very strongly convicted to doing this correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calvin, is it Street?
Yes, my name is Calvin Street. I've lived here for 10 years. I've worked here for 10 years, and I support cannabis.
Thank you. Chris Raycraft?
Good evening. I am a brand-new resident of Oceanside. I actually live—
Welcome.
—across the tracks, on the other side of the Sprinter tracks, from this wonderful location over there, and I am fully supportive of legal and accessible cannabis in our lovely city. I do not partake, but I know a lot of people who use it for great purposes, and they should have better access, not to mention the financial ramifications it can have for our city as well with generation of income through taxes and additional employment for our members of our city that need a safe place to work, especially at a female-owned business, which I 100% support always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Seba?
Ron Seba.
If I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Ron?
Ron Seba. So, any other requests to speak? You, you can approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I apologize. It's been a long time. I couldn't figure out your system of—amused to the old paper forms. My name is Eric Halyry. I'm the program manager of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, also a more than 25-year resident of Oceanside. For those of you who know me, you probably think I'm anti-cannabis. I'm not necessarily anti-cannabis. I'm pro-youth and want to make sure that we have protections in place that are reasonable and help prevent youth from a journey of substance use. So I'm not necessarily here to oppose, but perhaps request a delay for further discussion about potential opportunities. I am a resident in the zone for public notification and didn't receive the notice until January 5th. It was dated December 16th by the city. Over the holidays left me very limited time to research further and do additional contact to our new council members, and I welcome you and thank you for your service to the I wanted to remind you that at this location, you did approve a manufacturing and distribution business already in the same business location, and there are no conditions limiting the types of products manufactured or the types of products distributed, and there is no, no hope coming from the state. There was a bill by a pediatrician, who is a state senator, wanting to increase warning labels on advertising and products, and that failed after industry opposition. And since this was approved, we continue to get alarming data. Sandeggs Report from October of 2022 of juvenile justice offenders found that 74% now report marijuana as their first drug ever tried, typically by age 12. 87% report vaping. 90% of that is nicotine vaping, and 80% THC. We also have data for suicide in San Diego County, suicides by those under 25. Marijuana was the most commonly found substance and found in 40% of suicide victims. So we've had public health successes when it comes to nicotine, when it comes to vaping. Tobacco is now 21 and up to purchase. We ban flavors. But we're not seeing any progress when it comes to protecting youth from cannabis access. It's easy to get for kids 18 and up with an online medical recommendation for anything from anxiety to a hangnail. There's no compliance protocols for delivery operations, and kids can access on their cell phones. And also, there's no data that shows that increasing the legal market decreases the illicit market. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to do, we're just going to kind of wing it here for a second. Okay, my name is Amber Newman. I live in Oceanside. I've been here for almost 18 years, and me and my husband David have been fighting for safe access in Oceanside for a number of years, as many of you already know. And obviously, anybody who is a cannabis advocate, we care about the youth, too. Nobody who advocates for safe access advocates for youth access. And what we're talking about tonight is a distribution center, which is strictly B-to-B. There is no public-facing activity happening here. So it's very low impact, you know, nobody even really knows where they are. But one thing that I will say is that for everybody here that is in support of cannabis, which yay, thank you, we don't truly have safe access in Oceanside until we have dispensaries. Because the largest growing demographic in the cannabis industry are elderly and people who are looking to have a, have a better quality of life as they age. And a lot of those people want to have a safe place that they can go to and be educated in a safe space with knowledgeable people. So again, fight's not over. We still got to band together. There's a lot of work to be done, and we need the council's support as well. So I would suggest that we move forward on this and many other things, hopefully, in this upcoming year. So.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and go back to the council. I don't think we have, need a rebuttal, right? You don't want to say anything else, right? You? No? Okay. So back to the council. Councilmember Weiss?
I have a question for the applicant. So you own both the business and the building?
Correct.
We got a letter earlier today indicating that both the building and the business are in escrow.
That is not correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not correct. We own the building and plan on keeping it. That's all.
Deputy Merrick.
I have a quick question for the applicant as well. What's your relationship with Left Coast Districts?
They're a tenant.
Are they, are they still a tenant?
Correct. Yes.
They're still operating?
I'm sorry?
They're still operating?
Yes.
Do you do business? So I, the reason I ask—
My mic was on. The reason I ask is when they came before—
My mic was on. The reason I ask is when they came before us, they smartly turned off their social media, but it really looked like it was geared towards children. That's what it was advertised to. I was not comfortable with it. I did not approve their request. So I, do you, what specifically, do you conduct any business with them? What can you get?
No, it's, we're completely unrelated.
They're just a tenant?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Are you gonna be doing any advertising to youth at all?
No. We're strictly business-to-business, so only business-to-business transactions, nothing retail or storefront.
Thank you. I'm going to move adoption. One second. Any, no, no other requests to speak? This is a resolution, so it doesn't, doesn't have to be titled. So call for the vote.
Yes. Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. To complete the advanced written request to speak on items off agenda?
Mrs. Martinez has left.
Sandra Martinez has left?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're on communication number 14, which is communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda that did not request to speak in advance request.
We have 17 speakers. However, I know a lot have already left.
Seventeen.
And a majority were from Cleaner for Kids, and they've already left. So I don't know the exact number of.
Want to call their names out and see how many we have?
Danielle, they just put Danielle is still here. Rose, Rose Higuera, she is not here. Susan Custer, I don't see her. Shelley Parker, I believe, was here, but she, it looks like she left. Patrick Higuera, left. And Sandra Martinez has left. Jimmy Knott is still here. Linda Walshaw is still here. Wendy Bravo Dolan?
I'm here.
Oh, you're, you're hiding behind the podium there. Suzanne Hume?
Not here.
I believe has left. Hannah Smith, Hannah Smith. Michael Richardson? He's gone. Yessenya Hernandez? Penelope? Penelope is here. Diane Hansen is here. Carrie Beauchaine is here. Beth Signer? Beth Signer or Beth Signer? Nope.
Spoke before.
So with that, we are left with
Seven?
About seven. Yeah.
Okay. Seven. I'll give you the three minutes, but if you can make your comments shorter, we would all really appreciate that.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Hi, and I would like to start off by welcoming our newest elected board members. My name is Danielle Craya, and I've been Oceanside resident and homeowner in District 4 since 2016. I have a short-term room rental inside of my, my private residence, which I have rented since 2016. I have been paying the City of Oceanside roughly $10,000 in STR fees yearly, contributing to the income. I had an ADU permitted last year on my property, and once that was permitted, I was then told I was no longer allowed to rent the room inside my primary residence for less than 30 days. I understand fully California law does not let you rent an ADU under 30 days, besides Los Angeles and San Francisco, who have chosen to allow it, since the state is trying to get more permanent housing. But the City of Oceanside specifically has added an additional restriction that prevents an owner from renting the primary residence, which includes a room even from inside my home, even if it's occupied by the owner for less than 30 days, if you have an ADU on your property. This makes no sense, and there's no rational basis, and this has significantly impacted my livelihood and depended upon income by preventing me from renting the room inside of my primary home for less than 30 days, which I would be allowed to do if I remove the ADU. This is why this restriction is unreasonable, and it goes against the state's intent, I believe. We offer short-term rental to young military couples, small families who want to expose their children to farm life and sustainable living. We have moms who visit their daughters from out of state having babies. We are not by the coast. Rather, I am located near Gohomi Lake Park and two and a half acres with various zoning overlays. And there are very few options for people to find accommodations in my area. This statute should be amended to allow primary residences to be rented for less than 30 days, whether it's a room rental-specific variance and not the entire home, or if it's just the owner who also needs to occupy the home while it's being rented. Based on all of this and more, there are sufficient considerations for the variance to be allowed, if not amended completely. I respectfully request the City Council bring this under review and change this ordinance that prevents a primary homeowner from running even a room in their private residence for less than 30 days, simply because they chose to build an ADU. So I'm only asking for a variance, whether that's a grandfathering in, or if it's a room or owner occupied. And I have been in touch with Rick Robinson in my district, and I do plan to follow up. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Yes, can I have the overhead, please? Can you bring it in? What you see there, this is Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane, Los Alamos Mobile Village, homeowners representative. What you see here is the bill that was passed and signed into law, and that's AB 2782, is one of the most confusing bits of legislation I have ever read in my life. It's like looking at math, and if you remember in high school math, you get a negative times a negative equals a positive. And then if you times it by a negative again, it becomes negative. And the verbiage in this is much akin to that. And what it does is that it puts at risk our city's rent control ordinance, the rights of our homeowners within the manufactured home community, and also the city itself. And what, there was a meeting on the 4th, I believe, of, excuse me, trying to get that correct here, on the 5th of January, I believe, with the City Attorney's Office and the Housing Department, because the Housing Department was trying to convert private leases, the majority of my park is, has private leases between the park's owner and the homeowner, and trying to convert those to rent control without the homeowner's permission. And this was something that would necessitate a charge to the park owner and the homeowner without consent. And this also would set up a huge problem legally for the park itself, park owner, the homeowner, and it would take and come down to a rights, civil rights situation. This is bringing up a lot of confusion. My park manager and myself have met. This is within the park reps have really gotten into this. And I, as I've said to the people, my recommendation is, might want to take and have a special account to deposit this, but we need to take and get some answers and not really act on this as
Thank you, mister.
the Housing Department wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you. You should approach Ms. Leilani Hines if it has to do with the rent control ordinance.
We have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Linda Walshaw again. I can answer Jimmy's questions, and the bill actually makes all leases subject to rent control in cities that have rent control. And then after 2025, the leases will no longer be allowed to exist. They will, all agreements will be rent control agreements in cities that have a rent control ordinance.
Does this address the problem with the 30- or 40-year leases?
It does. It does. I spoke to one of our attorneys today, and I have more information to share, but I was here to talk about some communication issues we're having. I'll
The Fair Practices Commission, this is something where you can bring up there. Okay.
One of the things I would like to do going forward to improve communications about this is I do think there's a lot of confusion within the parks. There are so many issues in so many parks that overlap, and I think if we could have a workshop or some kind of a meeting, either with council or the city manager or the city attorney's office.
Or the Fair Practices Commission.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. But going forward, I think there's, I think we can work this out, some of these issues out if we just communicate, because we used to do that. As an advocacy group, we have always had an amicable relationship with staff and city officials. And I'm so grateful for that, because a lot of times, we're able to resolve something with a phone call. The city, you know, housing director can pick up the phone and call the park and tell them, hey, this is not how we do things here, and that violates this law or that law. And then they can follow up with a code officer or whatever the issue is. It's usually something we can resolve very quickly, and we're running into these walls now, these communication gaps that shouldn't be happening. It can be fixed. I'm convinced of that. So my concern is that 97%, according to Sandag and the Census, of our coming population increase will be seniors over the age of 50 in North County, especially here in Oceanside. Our current income required to live here now is $47 to $49 an hour. Seniors on fixed incomes, disabled people, veterans, blind people do not make that kind of income. Our teachers, our nurses do not make that kind of income. It is critical that we preserve the manufactured home housing stock that we have, and that we create more affordable housing that can be reported as such to the state of California. I have a five-page list here of problems that we have in the parks, and I could just submit a list to you, but I don't think that's going to be effective. But I do want to bring to your attention that one of the biggest gaps we have right now is that the annual reports filed by the parks, there is a lot of false data in there. People are reporting only their managers' names and not the ownership.
All right. Thank you very much.
We have a lot of problems like that that can be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wendy? Wendy Bravo?
I have been greatly dismayed when I've come in to speak before City Council and also with the Housing Department, and to a certain extent with Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission. I am the president of Terrace Gardens Homeowners Association, and also a representative, or thought I was via Angie Hanifin, who had the job before Leilani Hines, and that was documented. I have correspondence here that shows that I attempted to, I submitted, I submitted in writing, outlining a number of egregious violations of state law and state regulatory law via the inspections, most notably lighting is very inadequate in our park. We've had three seniors stumble and fall, to varying degrees of injury. No answer. And you can see the CCs there. You can see that I wrote Kirk Munt, but that I also CC'd the inspector, I CC'd George McNeil, Barbara Hamilton, and Leilani Hines herself. I don't appreciate that, and I don't like being directed to a customer service number when a simple, or a simple respect can be shown.
Can you speak in the mic?
This is an extent, trip hazard here, that still exists, where you can pitch right off there in the dark. This was taken with a light meter. There's the lighting report. This is the instruments that I used. And there's the foot candle reading and what you get for foot candles in there. That's unchanged. Okay? And you have this, too. All through here, unchanged, underlit at night, coming through. This is, this is deplorable. And this is not a, you know, let's sit down and, you know, have a group discussion with Leilani Hines, because my confidence has been shaken another way. And that is that, you know, here you have Kirk Munt, my god, asking an expert to talk about mobile home inspection program, Title 25. He doesn't show up for that meeting. We have Leilani Hines come in and fill in with a PowerPoint where she's digesting 16B totally out of the range and scope of that ordinance and its intent, and basically mischaracterizing it as a negotiative tool or a negotiating tool, where owners are supposed to sit down in some sort of representative body as a committee to talk with
Thank you.
No, I need to finish. It'll only be about 30 more seconds, okay? Just please hear me out. That ordinance was written to prevent rent gouging, okay? We don't invite the people that, you know, may want to rent gouge, and this has been shown in some other towns by some owners here, you know, to the table to, to pull apart the ordinance that is designed and written to protect us. So this is confidence shaking. And what are, what are the aims here? And how is Leilani Hines being directed, if she is being directed? What kind of counsel has she received?
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name's Penelope Russell, and I'm a resident of Laguna Vista. I'm also the VP of our HOA, and also VP of OMA, which is Oceanside Manufactured Homeowners Alliance. I'm here tonight requesting the City Council allow remote participation of our expert witness, Dr. Baer, in our upcoming NOI hearing by the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission. We have given requests multiple times in person at City Council, in writing, through emails, and according to a letter we just received from Ms. Hines, on January 6th, our continued requests to grant remote participation have been denied without real good reason. According to Ms. Hines, and I quote, "At this time, at this point in time, staff cannot offer this accommodation without further City Council consideration and approval of such a process." So I am here representing our residents and our lawyer to grant, to have you, the council, grant permission of consideration and approval for our request. Thank you.
Thank you. When is the hearing on that? Has it been set?
We don't know. It's been going on since March.
Okay. Just wanted, I was actually action staff. Sorry. So we would have to, we would have to add it to the agenda to
Yeah, well, yes, so, honorable mayor and council.
But would it be allowed as a quasi-legal proceeding? Would it be allowed? Yes, right? Because courts are allowing testimony?
Your direction last year was to not have remote testimony. And so I think that's upon which Ms. Hines based her, her letter.
Right.
But of course, he could submit whatever testimony he wants in writing, and that's, that's perfectly permissible. If, you know, I think you would need to amend the direction that you've given to us about remote participation, if you wanted to allow that.
At least with respect to the, to commit boards and commissions, including the Fair Practices Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we follow the direction of the council on remote participation for all the boards and commissions.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Hansen?
Ms. Sanchez, council. My name's Diane Hansen. I'm the president of the Oceanside Manufactured Homeowners Alliance. And I'm here here to speak about the park inspection list. In 1997, Oceanside was designated by HCD to inspect the common areas of the manufactured home parks, according to HCD's guidelines. HCD has a list of items and allows the park 60 days to fix violations and levies fines if they're not repaired. The need to have an updated Oceanside inspection list is not a new issue. I brought it before the council last year. Linda Walshaw and Jimmy Knott have also mentioned this oftentimes at housing, fair practice, and city council meetings. Years ago, she and Jimmy Knott worked for eight months with Angie Hanifin Years ago, she and Jimmy Knott worked for eight months with Angie Hanifin to update the list. The report was supposed, was supported by housing, by the housing department. Then there were major changes in the city, new departments, new employees, and the report never got as far as the city council. Therefore, no action was taken, and unfortunately, now the city has lost all those reports. The manufactured park industry has also changed. Parks are now being purchased by corporate investment firms, which must show a profit to their investors. This causes many properties to be poorly maintained. Per-unit homeowners have a larger financial investment than the park owner. I ask this council to instruct housing and maybe code enforcement to prepare an updated inspection list and send it to the city council for approval. I realize this can't be done in time for this year's inspections, since they start next month, but hopefully, and maybe finally, we can get something done with this issue. It's been taking years, and nothing has been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Beauchaine?
Yes, I'm Carrie Beauchaine, I'm the president of the HOA at Laguna Vista Mobile Home Park, and I believe we are looking at probably March 3rd for, that's, that's at least the soonest we're going to be having our hearing, and I just wanted to reiterate what Penelope said, that we really would appreciate our, our doctor bar is, lives in Australia, and he is compromised health-wise, and particularly with the recent BBX variant of COVID-19 sweeping our country, we would think that maybe Oceanside would like to get out in front of the ball and allow remote testimony, at least at your discretion. The other thing I would like to address is the fact that I appreciate every one of you who works here and everybody on the council, this is a thankless job, I've been the school in school board as a superintendent, and this time-wise reminds me of a few of our meetings, and I know it's a thankless job, because no matter what you decide, someone's going to be ticked off, so thank you very much for your service, and congratulations to our district's new representative, Mr. Robinson. It's interesting that tonight you talked a lot about low-income housing, because our park is in fact a low-income park, 150 of our 271 available units have to be either low-income or very low-income. We're looking at an NOI that was turned in last March that could increase our rents by 26.7%. So we are very concerned, not only for what this would do to everybody in the park, but particularly with our members who are low-income and very low-income. So this NOI is extremely important to us, and we have retained what, one of the best NOI experts financially in the world, and he lives in Australia, and we would really appreciate if he could present his findings via remote. Handing him in in writing means that he would have to, means that everybody on the commission would have to read his report some, I guess, before the commission would even start the hearing, so we would appreciate consideration in that matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it for that item. Okay, well, we are now on general council member comments, anyone wishing to speak? Council member Joyce?
I just want to report out as liaison from the Parks and Recs Commission that they created and established a field and equity, a field and facility equity subcommittee, and they're going to go about looking at how fields and facilities are allocated across the city in an equitable manner. There's also concerns we're up about park safety, about general public trust with the communication, which is something that we heard again tonight, increasing the impact fees to support all of their concerns, and increasing the youth programming as a preventative public safety measure, so I just wanted to make my colleagues aware of that.
Thank you, council member Weiss.
Mayor, I would just ask that, as we adjourn, we do a moment of silence for the memory of Don Hadley.
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Okay, no other comments? I just wanted to say, I want to thank the city staff for taking calls during, during the Christmas time, when we were trying to figure out what was going on with asylum seekers, we did not know the status and what was going on, and I want to thank staff for working very closely with our nonprofits, nonprofits, who actually ended up taking the lead on addressing this. We did not know if it was going to be, you know, what the situation was going to be, and it was actually very, very positive, people came from, you know, on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, day after Christmas, came out to help, and it was just amazing to see this, because it was, these were folks who were, who were in detention in Arizona, and all they had to do was, you know, they had, they had a hearing, and they had sponsors, all they had to do was be released, go to the airport, and find their ways to, to their, to their places where they were going to reside, and then wait for their hearing, and hope that their application will be accepted. I, I was amazed, they were here at most one night, maybe two nights, that was it. So I did get a couple of emails regarding concerns, oh my gosh, we're going to have immigrants walking the streets and possibly even criminals, and that was absolutely not the case, they were here and gone very quickly, and it is not, if it was a safety issue, it was for the young folks who were here, the young girls and boys, and who would have been left out in the middle of nowhere on Christmas, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. So the, it's going to be changing, depending on what happens with Title 42, I have no idea. Our congressman, I did contact a congressman, wondering why did we get folks dropped off here in Oceanside from Arizona? And apparently, there's an internal policy with Customs and Border Protection that if they're at capacity, say in Arizona, they can go to any other place, service center, and so they decided to go to San Clemente. So San Clemente ended up dropping folks here in Oceanside without a whole lot of notice. So I do want to, you know, dispel any concerns, there is now a rapid response team of volunteers who have gotten together, we are, we are on top of this, and we are working closely, very closely with the feds, the state, the county, and will hopefully be able to respond. I have no idea what's going to happen with Title 42, I have, I have no idea if they're going to be able to be processed, but these are things that we have no control over as a city, or as a county, or as a state. It's truly, you know, in federal hands, we have severely unworkable immigration system that needs, needs a lot of, a lot of fixing, is that something that we can do here? No, but certainly, I'm working with our congressman to see what we can do to hopefully push for legislation that will address it. But thank you very much to all the churches and the volunteers who helped us through this, and I will now adjourn to Wednesday, January 25th, for our next meeting at 3:30. Thank you. So my apologies, moment, moment of silence, please. Thank you.